And kind of discussion around which one of those they felt was the better usage when we're talking about an educational system. They really, as we went through each of the different words within the beliefs, they really did give a lot of input on the safe and supportive words and how our schools are safe and supportive. And had some great insight on what that should look like. Things like "safe without creating fear" was where some of their discussion went. Things along the lines of "kind and cheerful with happy faces", "comforting, welcoming to kids", "everyone feels welcome in school", "easygoing teachers", "respecting beliefs of others", "nowhere to go for mental health". I think that was from our students. And they fit that under the "supportive". What does it mean when we say "supportive"? What does that look like for you as students? Of course, they said "help with our academics", "nowhere to go for mental health", "know what resources are available".
I just want to clarify, they know where to go? Or "nowhere to go" as in there's no place to go for that?
No. K-N-O-W. No. And so when we were talking about what is a support, when we say "supportive school environment", what does that mean for you? And it was that students know where they can go.
I heard it wrong the first time I heard you.
Yes, okay. I apologize.
No worries.
So it was great for Fred and I to be able to sit and just listen to what the students' thoughts were as we went through these. This is what the board is thinking as they work through this process. When we asked them, you know, what are the behaviors that adults would show in a safe and supportive environment? We got examples like accepting, educating everyone, conscious awareness of our message. This is just my reprieve notes that the kids gave us. It was really impressive. Disagree with respectful conversation. So we were really proud of them and felt like we were on the right track with them. We talked, we spent a lot of time talking about rigorous versus challenging and what does that look like? And they expressed things such as "don't assume everyone's at the same level at the same time". So we thought that was kind of profound. We talked about, you know, we had a lot of discussion here around whole child. And they didn't seem to struggle with that too much. They really accepted that and understood that fairly easily.
Where did they land on "believe" versus "value"?
They were pretty divided, but had an interesting conversation around their concept of beliefs being more individual and values being more of a group sense. Would you agree, Fred? Is that what you heard as well?
Definitely. Yeah, and they am values being more forward-looking and beliefs being more situational, isolated to the present.
So just some very initial input from our students on the work that you've already done? Comments? Questions?
Is it okay to comment on changes that...
Oh, absolutely. Like I said, those were just...
I don't know if this is on. Is this on? Can you hear me on it?
Yep.
Fully appreciate the consistency of the verb tense and appreciate that change. I'm struggling a little bit, but I'm okay with it. But I just want to know if anybody else is struggling with it. Keeping students, that phrase. To me, that's, it kind of sort of implies there's a status quo. And it's like keeping students are priority. And kind of, when I read that, I kind of go, I wonder what their previous belief statement was. One, and then there's kind of this weird awkward kind of possessiveness of keeping students. So I kind of liked how we had it before where students are the priority and then we have the statements. But I agree, there's maybe a verb tense issue there.
I actually was thinking the same thing. I think it takes away from our statement of students are our priority. Are the priority.
I don't disagree. And I think some of it can be alleviated by just the format of how it's written. So I mean, we have those four bullet points in the first example from the 24th. And students are the priority. And then maybe even the "we believe" goes below that. Or "value", that word is still up for debate and consensus. "We value supporting the whole child", or "we believe in supporting the whole child" and going through those. So I think somewhat the format, once we get to what the words are, might also help.
It's interesting, the belief and the values question. Because I, you know, I mean, that's really deep critical thinking. I love it. But when I've done these, you know, the core beliefs, to me, like in, you know, personal coaching, stuff like that, and it's always been called core values. In my experience. And so what we could do is call it our core values and then the statement itself is "we believe", because that is what we currently believe.
Or you could just remove that line altogether. I mean, since it is under "core values" statement, colon, and then it would just be the bulleted list.
Well, no, what I mean, because I imagine that we'll have in the headlines of, you know, vision and mission. And so the headlines being "core values", "vision and mission", and then under that, for core values, we say "students are the priority", and then the "we believe", like Donna just said, with the four bullets. Because, I mean, typically you're going to see like the vision and mission, vision and mission itself like bulleted. So, and then I think we can do the same thing with core values. I mean, I think it would be...
So you're saying we'd have...
We don't need statement. I mean, I think statement is redundant. Because we're not making a statement of values work.
So it'd be "core values" in bold, and then "we believe", colon?
No, start with "students are the priority".
Students are the priority. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then kind of be in a skip a space.
That's the same page. Okay. Thank you.
And the "students are a priority" not in bold. I mean, just the headlines.
But it's the statement. Students are the priority.
And it's a statement standing on its own.
"We believe in supporting the whole child, inclusive and equitable learning settings, ensuring support". Yes.
I like that. I like the value, core values. Core values makes sense. And I like the "believe" later on because "we value" is redundant. And I think "believe" is a little stronger in that use. So I kind of like what you proposed.
Well, and what's interesting is, you know, when we all, I think we all chose integrity as a value. And that's, integrity is a value, it's not a belief. So that's, I mean, that's, I think it's a much better caption for what we're looking at.
Any other thoughts on the...
Supporting our whole child. Supporting the whole child versus, say, developing the whole child?
Well, we're not developing them. They're developing themselves and we're just supporting them in their development.
I like that interpretation. Because whole child is very inclusive of a lot of things that go beyond education too. So we're supporting it?
Do you feel like there's something missing there?
Yeah, supporting seems a little passive. Developing seems a little active. That would be my... It's also, we use "supporting" twice in some ways there. Rigorous and challenging learning as well. So there's a little bit of redundancy in it. So just looking for some alternatives, I suppose, in another sense, could be there too.
Backed it with the source?
Yep. How do you know what I was doing? Because I feel like we had some other ones. But I don't have those notes right now.
Hey, I thought we had that in conversation. Did we still, did we end up with a little redundancy still after that?
Yeah, we were trying to remove some of the redundancy.
Encouraging the whole child? Promoting?
I would be more apt to change. If we had a, felt we really needed to eliminate one of the supportings, I would look at changing supporting rigorous and challenging learning. Because supporting the whole child is, that's pretty specific. Those are those wraparound services for the whole child, like how we support that child. Whereas we can develop rigorous and challenging learning.
Or we provide.
Provide.
Providing rigorous and challenging learning?
They took the 124 example. Because I think we've decided that way. The other way is probably... Okay. That was what we talked about last time.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, I just realized, I mean, we used it three times. I mean, it's supporting the whole child. Safe and supportive, and then supporting. So the thesaurus gives us promoting, which I think could definitely work.
Providing sounds more affirmative than promoting.
For the rigorous and challenging.
You were going to promoting the whole child.
I don't, I don't have, I mean, I'm fine with supporting. I mean, I think, I think we should find some new words, but I don't have a, I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think that is our job to support the whole child in who they are. So I think it's really appropriate there.
But then, wouldn't it should be listed first if we're taking a, in some sense, secondary or not primary role in that one versus some of the other ones we do take a primary? "Inclusive and equitable learning settings", certainly primary. About our schools, "are safe and supportive", certainly primary. Promoting rigorous and challenging learning, certainly a primary role. It seems like the only kind of supportive role we provide is in the whole child.
Do you engage the whole child? But I, even though it seems less active or I still think it's as important to support that whole child.
And it's also, I mean, you know, we're writing these, but they're not about us. I kind of feel like, I mean, I don't know that our core values need to be about what we're doing. Our values as a whole is what does our community value? Not what's the school providing? Or, you know what I mean?
Well, I thought we had that debate to a certain extent when we said ensuring our schools are safe and supportive. I mean, we're talking about our schools in specific, not our community as a whole. I mean, I think if there was a community value, we would care about that at the community level, certainly not, not just at the school level. I, you come back and think this is about the school and learning environment in specific.
I agree with that. But I'm okay with supporting the whole child being listed first. And we did also talk about this being bullets and that doesn't imply a certain order.
Priority.
And I mean school, community. I don't mean overall, general community. I mean, school, community, admin, teachers, parents, students.
Yeah, that's what I think as well, when I think schools. Yeah.
And what was it in the, that the student feedback in terms of the safe and, what was their word? Oh, without fear.
Right. Without fear. Comforting, welcoming.
Safe and welcoming instead of supportive?
Yeah, I was looking at that kind of... I'm wondering if supportive in that third bullet point is redundant with number one up there? Or if that's a different type of support?
I like welcoming though. To put welcoming in there. I mean, not just that, it's kind of, it's our philosophy of soft, you know, safety in schools. It's the soft safety without...
Is there a word, when I think of welcoming, I think of that as kind of a one and done activity? As opposed to something that's enduring?
That's kind of where my mind went to with welcoming as well.
My life idea.
Yeah.
Approachable. Responsive.
Supportive has very positive connotations as well, which we were kind of looking for. You know, no cons necessarily associated with it. I think responsive potentially has, you know, some columns associated with it, much more so than supportive.
It might be able to use collaborative, but it's not quite the same.
Quite, yeah.
It's not the same. I love how the "safe" and "supportive" are there. The "safe" kind of talks about the building as well as the interactions of our community. But I think when I look at that, I think our buildings, our campuses are safe. And the supportive is the human element that comes with that. So it covers both aspects.
So to take that thread a little bit further, Brian, do you need "and supportive" there? Because if you look above, "inclusive and equitable learning settings"...
I want to make sure that the "safe", that we're defining it in both a physical and an emotional. So, I mean, however we do that is fine. But I think we need something more than just safe.
Yeah, I like the positive connotations of supportive occurring in conjunction with safe. It means a lot, I think, together.
So if you change on that fourth bullet, as it's up there now, change that "supporting" to "promoting rigorous and challenging learning", there's a little less redundancy.
Or providing?
Or providing? And someone's going to have some suggestion on some...
I wish you could, it's perfect.
Right.
A lot of times we talk about access, equitable access. You could have "safe" and "accessible". Like you're talking about welcoming, being there. It depends on where people go with access, but...
We talked about nurturing at one point and that didn't quite, I think we kind of agreed it was too soft.
Yeah. You know, uplifting and maybe too much.
I think that's where we arrived at supporting the whole child. This wasn't nurturing.
We did talk a lot about that.
So far, I like welcoming the message. Because it shows that we want, I mean, that anyone is, I mean, a least student is welcome to be who they are, is what it says to me. I mean, I just haven't found a word that I like better yet.
And there's worse things than being redundant on the word "supportive".
And I think not using "supporting" as the start for two of the bullets. Changing the one that's providing rigorous and challenging learning gives a start to each bullet that's a little different, but still making the point that we're trying to make.
Promoting's out.
Yeah, I think we want to be a little bit more active than...
Which would be "providing".
Promoting, which is providing. Yeah. Yes, demanding would be a little excessive.
Has some negative connotations to it.
Ensuring that our schools are safe and approachable?
I wonder if instead of saying "schools", it's our school, community. And that kind of implies a little bit more... That our school community is safe and supportive. Bullet three, does he mean it?
I think it sends a good message.
Do you want to go "communities" or "community"? I like to think of it as just one community.
And do you need the word "that"? Could it just be "ensuring our school communities are safe and supportive"? I'm not sure the word "that" adds anything. I would suggest leaving the word "supportive" there. It's different than, you know, supporting the whole child. I think it gives the intent that we discussed at length about what we want our schools to be for our students.
I guess I do like the idea of the word "community" being in there. I think it has a number of other meanings as well.
Ensuring our school community is safe and supportive for bullet three is what I hear. So for this statement, we would start with core values. We believe, oh, I'm sorry, core values. Students are the priority. We believe in supporting the whole child, inclusive and equitable learning settings, ensuring our school community is safe and supportive, providing rigorous and challenging learning.
Another one from the thesaurus. Supporting the whole child is also championing the whole child? Or is that too abstract?
I like it. Because in a sense, we were celebrating them. We're going to champion them and their identity and who they are when they come to us. Sometimes I mean in challenging ways, in other ways it means truly valuable. But that, that child needs those aspects.
I'm concerned it's too positive in terms of, I mean, yes, of course we want to champion them when they're doing something well. But when they're not doing something well, we're not championing any of them. They're without them.
I agree. I also think it... The other two bullets aren't as strong. We're championing as, providing as. Probably isn't championing inclusive and equitable learning settings too.
Do we believe in all of this?
You know, the first one does talk about the child, him or herself. Whereas the other ones are supports for the children in some sense. Right? So there is, there is some value that students are, we believe in students and the first thing to do is to, is to champion the whole child, to champion the children. Make them, or help them be successful, make them be successful. And being successful means also coping with failures. It's never a straight line to any success. I don't, don't know if it takes away from that. I do concur that championing seems like it's coming in first, being number one has, you know, it's a very strong value judgment. And that's, that's downsides too.
Brian used the word "celebrate" for the whole child.
What am I, I'm saying something? I think it's a great term. I think champion and celebrate is great. But it's missing that element of, of building, you know, the positive sense.
I think it also makes it more about us than about our students. Because we're celebrating championing them, but our job is to support them so they can.
Another word to throw out, just while we're here. Recognizing the whole child, about, you know, understanding all the different facets that make up this child and, you know, and caring about each of the different facets. So it's not as active as supporting would be my, my one, my con. I've got the dossier and that's about all I care about and my resume. That's it. That's a downside to that.
I'm always a big fan of the word "no good". It's not, I'm trying to use a lot, "no good", which talks about supporting, encouraging, providing, developing. But it might be too gilded or...
I think we need to remember that this is going to be something that we are going to have permeate throughout our entire system. So it needs to be really easy for people to understand and all of it, including our kids. So when we have a conversation with our students about it, do they have a way to say this is what that looks like?
Then the next one would be honoring the whole child to build on that.
It's like investing in the whole child. But again, getting them is your recognition. I think that's an important element. And all of that has been supportive. So we do all those things and how we support the whole child.
I still like supporting. Supporting implies recognition.
That's fair. The wall looks pretty littered and nothing stuck, so... Supporting is good.
And providing for the fourth bullet. So it's not redundancy. And not to draw the conversation short, but we are at five fifty-two. Sorry.
Just wanted to take a quick look back at the vision and mission statements. No, I think you're going more right than you're right now. There we go.
Same.
Not, not the Lucas part. Right underneath the one twenty-four bullet points, there we go. So we have a vision statement from last time. We, our students will be inspired to become lifelong learners who create their futures. If you look at another interpretation of this, it's just kind of changing the verbs a little bit around. Preparing our students to be lifelong learners as they create their futures.
I like that if we take up preparing and put in inspiring. Inspiring our students to be lifelong learners as they create their futures. I like inspiring there.
We on full circle though, did we start off with inspiring, preparing, and we end up?
I don't think we did. We did talk about inspiring and I know that that's why the word inspired is in that example. From one twenty-four, our students will be inspired.
That seems like we landed on inspired.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we changed preparing to inspire, inspiring our students to be lifelong learners as they create their futures. Or stick with the twenty, the word that you did on the twenty-fourth, our students will be inspired to become lifelong learners, to create their futures.
I like the more active words, inspiring our students.
Yeah. Yeah, and that suggestion sounds good.
And visionary.
And then the mission statement that we left with last time. Mercer Island School District will foster learning by engaging students to think critically, solve problems creatively, and work collaboratively.
Did I have a hiccup with solving problems creatively on that one? That there were some problems that you didn't solve and don't necessarily have to have creative solutions, you just have to have the skill set to solve them?
We ultimately do want that creative. I think, I think so. And some, I mean, not, it's not, I don't think it's saying that every problem needs to be solved in a creative way. Like, it doesn't say that you have to go reinvent the wheel, but we do want them to think about whether or not it is the right way to solve a problem. I mean, I'm not dead set on creatively, but.
I'm just, I forgot, did we have that discussion?
We discussed it in some way. I don't remember where.
Because it's farmed close. I mean, it might be there, so.
Well, and always, I mean, if you're thinking creatively, you're problem solving creatively, and you still come back to, you know, the way we've always fixed that is, is really the best way to fix that, then you've proven your proof, right? You've, you've looked at it from different angles, you challenged it, and no, it's still the right answer. But I think it's good not get into that rut and always try to think creatively.
Because just because we say work collaboratively, collaboratively, doesn't mean that you're never working on your own.
Oh, no, I agree.
So, you know what I mean? I mean, just in terms of the same way.
This is good to me.
All right, so we will scribe these into a format with, that will then start to develop a schedule to meet with different groups, to gather input and feedback. And hopefully you as directors will be willing to come along as we present and discuss this to our different stakeholder groups. We'll start by putting it in a format that is that nice communication style of formatting for people to take a look at.
So one. Suggestion, interest, maybe interest. You know, speaking to, we had a PTA advocacy meeting and so some people are the most informed, active PTA parents and they, this wasn't on their radar. They haven't seen it. So the way to maximize community buy-in and get as much results and feedback as possible, as well as buying into the process, I think the more announcements, the better. Whether it's on the website or other things, who say, hey, FYI, here's what's going on, here's the process, here's how to take part.
It will be a roadshow. So all the committees that you sit on at the individual school sites, we're going to ask to get invited to come to those and speak with those groups, all of the superintendent advisories, including the community advisories. The student advisory already knows it's coming and they scheduled an extra meeting so that we could work through it with them as well. And having that input either in the digital means that people can give feedback or a potential community forum where we say people come and give us feedback as well. And getting that word out there in every communication, way, shape, and form.
And I, and I think it would be advantageous for our district to go broader to even our residents that don't have kids in schools currently, but are still vested in the success and pay taxes and want to have.
That's the absolute reach out to the, to the community. We're going to send them the notice to say, wait, here's what we're thinking. We'd like your input. We'll have these face-to-face meetings or you can provide input on this technology way as well. All right, we'll work on a timeline for that and get it to all of you as well. Great work. Everyone take a side, really.
Any other comments, questions? Let's go ahead and recess then. And do people need more than five minutes to get settled? And the meeting at six oh one?
Sorry.
I first used that with, we had the original production that Jonah Park, you're doing.
We don't need these out at all.
Okay, so six oh seven, let's reconvene. We'll start with our, moving into our regular meeting. We've already established the agenda from our earlier study session. So our first item up is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Now's your chance. Okay. Seeing no public comments, we will move on to section three, part B. We have a proclamation.
So as noted on the agenda, February is recognized as National African American History Month. And so to recognize that, we've attached to the agenda the president's proclamation. And also, I would like to share with the board, if I can find it, sorry, some of the activities that have been occurring in our schools in the short time we've been in in February and that are also planned for the rest of February. But also because last month, we also recognized Martin Luther King Jr. in the holidays. So we've had a lot of activities centered around that recognition as well. At the high school, for example, we had an assembly put on by the Black Student Union, as well as a class discussion of Dr. King's speech, which he criticized structure of Reconstruction and also acknowledging the legacy of Dr. King. The Islander Online will focus all month on Black history, Black voices, and will spotlight students of color at Mercer Island High School. And there will be a unit on the tension between individual freedom and social equality. And we'll use Black Lives Matter as a case study into the theory behind freedom and equality. And we will also be doing some group analysis and presentations of African American voices from Dubois and Booker T. Washington to Tennessee Coates. And we're hoping we can get all of this in in February because we did have some days. We are also looking at a global scientist awareness project where students choose a non-white, non-male scientist and highlight that specific scientist's work. And our margins program is focusing on three lessons based on activist and social justice work through a culturally responsive lens of three African American women in the arts, Esperanza Spalding, Fabiana Rodriguez, and Sohar Assad. At the middle school, they had a Living Voices performance to all grades about the civil rights movement. Each teacher created and delivered a lesson around equity and diversity within their content area. Bulletin board timeline of important dates of civil rights, posters with quotes from Martin Luther King and other civil rights leaders displayed throughout the school, and a variety of lunchroom activities where students could personalize their learning around diversity and equity. At West Mercer, they had an assembly from Book at Theater, New Shoes. There was a focus on literature in classrooms and in the library on famous African American classroom presentations. And the same at Northwood, the Book at Assembly, New Shoes. And also Buddy Classes created a mural culminating study of Ruby Bridges. If you walk their halls, you will also see lots of Martin Luther King Jr. writing and art on displays. And studies of notable African Americans, including Harriet Tubman, George Washington Carver, Rosa Parks, May Jemison, Neil deGrasse, Oprah Winfrey, among others. At Island Park, again, their bulletin board hallway presentations, including poems, Martin Luther King's essays and arts, literature in their classrooms, and famous American classroom presentations. And at Lakewood, again, their hallways, if you walk the halls of our elementaries, you really do see what our students are engaged in. So I always encourage everyone to take a look particularly at our elementaries. They've focused on literacy activities around poetry, books, and articles related to famous and regular African Americans all year throughout, but with a special focus in January and February. And so in recognition of African American History Month 2019, we will continue to engage our students in learning about the history of our country.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, three C will be our student representative report.
Hi. Firstly, as you know, Mercer Island students have been enjoying the recent snowy weather. Many islanders spent their days off playing with friends outside, sledding, snowball fighting. Many Islanders spent their days off playing with friends outside, sledding, snowball fighting, and even skiing, while others worked on homework inside. Either way, we're happy to be back now, and we're very appreciative of Ms. Klosky's concern for student safety this past week.
Starting with the elementary schools, most notably, Northwood and West Mercer Elementaries are participating in the Great Kindness Challenge, involving checklists of things they can do to show kindness, such as helping younger students, complimenting others, and more. This challenge was also featured as part of the 2019 Winter Spotlight.
February may be a short month with midwinter break, but it's full of activities for middle school students. The character trait of the month at IMS is kindness, which requires us to reach out to others and extend ourselves, even to those we may not be particularly fond of. This includes appreciating, encouraging, being courteous, listening well, and giving credit and praise for efforts made.
The ASB Leadership Class of IMS is facilitating Kindness Week for IMS students and staff this week. Students will be encouraged to participate in a kindness bingo with a variety of acts of kindness suggestions. Students from the Sources of Strength Group will be hosting an activity in which all students are invited to write kindness messages of hope on heart-shaped cutouts to be given to homeless youth in Seattle.
Two fun contests that will take place at IMS this month are the ASB and Leadership Class is hosting a March Madness-style basketball tournament for students at lunch with a bracket playoff. And also, Sources of Strength have organized a first-period competition for classes to see who can bring in the most donations of new socks and toiletries that will be sent to serve the homeless in our region.
Additionally, some more kindness. The IMS Music Department also started the month of February with a coat drive for homeless youth through the Youth Care of Seattle organization. ASB Leadership students are also fundraising for Treehouse, an organization that supports foster kids.
And unfortunately, a couple of events at the middle school were canceled or postponed due to weather. The eighth-grade band's trip to the UW festival was canceled, and the All District Orchestra Concert, and the All District Orchestra Concert scheduled for Tuesday, as well as the family trivia night originally scheduled for yesterday, were both postponed.
At MIHS, students were very relieved that finals are over. The week of finals went by quickly with an early release on Friday. The following Saturday morning and afternoon was the East Shore Solo and Ensemble Festival. MIHS band and orchestra members performed throughout the day, and many students are advancing to state.
Many wins from this competition included Sophia Ristovin, who won the French horn room, Lauren Nakatsu won the clarinet room, Yubin Lee won the alto sax room, the Piazzolla Winds won the large woodwind ensemble room, Jack Price won the trombone room, and more.
Hannah Gogesh won the trumpet room, the MIHS Clash of Egos won the large brass ensemble room, Ben Rowe won the mallets room, Andrew Moats won the timpani room, and Otto Sharples won the snare room.
Tolo was that same evening and was a success as well. In other news, ninth grade registration went very well also. All but ten families were represented by parents or students at the information session, and many high school clubs and activities were able to meet prospective members. Additionally, course registration at the high school has also begun. Students are thinking about classes for next year, and counselors are master scheduling teachers for the coming year.
Drama, two members finished their performances of Metamorphosis. Despite showtime changes due to weather this past weekend, both casts performed with an exciting pool onstage. And unfortunately, again, many more exciting activities were hindered due to weather. These included a jazz symposium, the Wind Ensemble's Band Festival at UW. And the two of us were also very disappointed that the WASDA Day on the Hill conference was canceled. Nevertheless, despite the weather complications, January and the beginning of February have definitely been rewarding.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions, comments, or? Okay. Appreciate it.
Is there any thoughts about Day on the Hill makeup day? Or has anybody heard anything about that?
I've not heard. I think the organizations are looking into it, because it's the three different groups. It's the school administrators, business officers, that's not the correct, WOSBO, and school directors. So whether or not we'll be able to organize something back together, I'm not sure. But I was the one on the legislative committee who was organizing our appointments with our local representatives. And so if the two of you still have messages that you would like to take to the Hill, to our representatives, and can organize that with your principal and the superintendent, I would be happy to reach out and make those appointments for you. Yeah.
Thank you.
You got it. Or Ralph and I will. You're the lead rep. I was disappointed that you didn't get that opportunity as well. Okay, so we'll move on now to 3D, the superintendent's update.
So a couple of things for the board. First up, before we start, I would like to acknowledge our condolences on behalf of the board to the family of Ran Gin. Ran passed recently, and Ran was a school board director in 2000, 2001. In my short time here, I actually had the privilege to meet with Ran and serve with him on a committee and also in Rotary. And a very gracious, caring, and giving member of this community and a great loss. So just to send our condolences to his family at this time. We have a couple of things to share with the board. First up, as our student reps mentioned, it has been a month of kindness challenges. And our spotlight video that's been created and is on our website is about the Great Kindness Challenge. And it's really short, so we would like to actually play it for you, and it should work. We did a test, and I was told it would work. Do we have sound? No sound? Let's see, let's move on to, well, he's working on that, because our next is also going to use the video with the slide deck for the budget at a glance. We mentioned about snow days, and just to keep everyone updated on where we are in process for that, we do have three snow days built into our current calendar. And so we will be utilizing March 11th, May 24th, and June 21st as makeup snow days. We will have regular school days. There is also a provision under the State Board of Education, if we meet certain requirements, for us to apply for a waiver for the other two days. And so staff is working on the calculations for that. And there will be an item that we will need to bring to the board for approval for that. But we are hesitant to do that too soon, because we are still in February, and the long-range forecast is unpredictable at best. And so we will be looking to ask for a waiver when we have the information that confirms that we are eligible for it. So that's where we are with our snow days. And if we can't get the sound to work...
Kind things.
I will be kind by giving somebody...
Are we ready?
When you have an opportunity, always go with kindness. The Great Kindness Challenge is an opportunity for students to bring hope and inspiration to other students by doing acts of kindness for other people.
Kids can put quotes on the wall after they make a snowflake, and they're spread all the way down this hallway over here.
Our students have a Great Kindness Challenge checklist that has many opportunities for them to do kind things.
I will be kind by giving somebody a compliment. And kindness begins with me, and being kind means to be kind and not expect anything in return.
I helped my dad cook breakfast, and I helped my sister with her homework. When you are kind to, like, someone else, then they'll be like, oh, wait, so if she's kind to me, maybe I should be kind to other people, too.
We have a clothing drive that is for students in Olympia, where the children may or may not have winter clothing to keep them warm during these cold months.
With us doing these activities, what I notice in our students is that they don't need to be reminded to be kind, they're choosing to be kind to each other. Whether it's with words or actions, they're asking each other if they need help. They notice if somebody is maybe having a bad day, and they'll do what they can to cheer them up.
Even if it's small acts of kindness, you're being the best version of yourself.
I think it's important that we all recognize that we're all looking for a meaningful connection with people. And I think one of the things that we can start that with is by being kind to each other.
It's kind to yourself to be kind, because if you're kind to other people, they will be kind to you, because they know that they can trust you.
Kindness means that, to be, like, respectful and nice and caring, and also, like, that everybody needs kindness. Nobody in this world does not like kindness.
So that is available for your viewing pleasure on our website as kind of our mid-year spotlight video on some of the work that we're engaged in in social emotional learning. And so next up, Ty, we'll move over to the presentation as well. We've been working on, and we know we've discussed with the board a little bit about how do we, how do we create a tool that helps us explain and talk about, particularly, one of the complicated pieces of the work we do, which is school finance and our budget? So we've put together a slide deck to help kind of explain, certainly at the broader level, at the state level, and then a little bit at the school district level. So I'm gonna let Ty take it away, and we'll double team it, and I'll interject at some points.
Okay. Also, if you have questions, please interject. I do tend to go on. So tonight, we're doing a discussion of what exactly is school finance, kind of a higher-level approach to it. Some of the fundamentals of school district accounting. Our accounting structure is governed by the OSPI, essentially, the School's Accounting Manual, or SAM. We love our acronyms in accounting. As well as what's called GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board. They help set some of the guidelines for how we function as an accounting entity, or as a government entity. Government entities, and schools in particular, are based around what's called fund accounting. You know, fund, fundamentals of accounting. There's a joke in there somewhere. It's an accounting joke. I know. The crickets speak for themselves. I'm just gonna stop. Funds are essentially a self-contained accounting entity. As the appropriate technical definition is a self-balancing set of accounts. Now to wake you both up, wake everybody up, funds are essentially, it's a separate organization within the budget structure of the budget. And dollars from each of the funds are legally restricted to supporting the mission of that fund, with some very specific exceptions. And they are very few. The funds that we use in the school district are the general fund, it's the chief operating fund for the district, it's where we pay our payroll, it's where we pay taxes for items that we purchase, wages, utilities, it's where we buy books from, that's our general operating fund, hence "general." Capital fund is, we use capital fund for facility construction, facility improvements, certain maintenance options, and for technology. In Washington State, we can use a capital levy to buy technology curriculum. It's kind of counterintuitive, but it works for us, and it's awesome. And it helps pay for our one-to-one iPad programs, it helps pay for Schoology and Seesaw and all these other great things that we get to see our kids on as they're doing stuff in the classroom. Debt service, that's specifically limited for the repayment of bonds used in construction. Transportation is specifically for the purpose of purchasing buses. And ASB is for student activities, clubs, and it is managed by the students, and it is an interesting creature. How are we funded? We have several funding streams. Our biggest funding stream is general-purpose state revenue, followed up by local taxes. That's our educational maintenance and operations levy, that's our capital levy. Every six years, we get a transportation levy that puts money into the transportation fund, so that we can buy buses. ASB doesn't get any levies. Local support, that's fines, fees, donations, and gifts, that's where the foundation comes in, that's where the PTAs come in. And we have a fantastic community in terms of providing support for the schools and the buildings and our mission. Then we have state special purpose. That's state funding specifically for special education, high cap, ELL, very specific, tied to specific criteria in terms of student enrollment and performance. We get some federal revenue, very little. We have special purpose federal revenue. Those are, that's our SPED grants, special education grants, that's Title I grants, child nutrition grants. Our biggest federal program is special education, and that's usually what most districts are. That's their biggest federal program. Other school districts, sometimes we'll participate in cooperatives, where we'll ship a student to them, they'll ship a student to us, or they'll reimburse us for helping with what's called McKinney-Vento transportation. It's students that are homeless. We provide transportation from wherever they are living currently to the district. So if their student lives in Seattle, Seattle helps pay for the cost of transporting the student from the shelter in Seattle, or where, not necessarily a shelter, but wherever they're living, to Mercer Island. So we split the costs. Other entities, City of Mercer Island helps contribute to the pool, Mary Wait Pool. So we do get some revenue from them. And other financing sources, sale of property, equipment and bonds, if we surplus some computers, that's where it goes. And the money we get from the state, it's called general apportionment. This is the big bucket of money. And the way that the state gives us money is this wonderful tool called the prototypical school model. And Director Jenny Upton knows what's going on. He's excited. It's essentially a giant calculator, kind of a black box. The assumption when they made the model was, is that there's a typical school somewhere in the state of Washington that has 400 students. And for every 400 students, they assign a certain number of full-time equivalent positions of principals and teachers and counselors and all these other things. So when we build our budgets, we go into this lovely little calculator, and we take a look at our student enrollment, and we put it in, and it spits out how many administrators we get, how many teachers we get, how many paraeducators we get, and how many custodians and whatnot. And what we get in terms of material supplies and operating costs. And then each of those is broken down into more detailed things like wages and payroll taxes and benefits, like health insurance and retirement. So it's the actual, if you go to OSPI's website, you can look up our actual apportionment documents. It is about 80 pages long. If you're having problems sleeping, I highly recommend it. It is very informative, though, once you figure it out. So as I said, the general, the model proposes a typical school, and this is just kind of, this is from our funding for 1819 school year. These are the allocations based on the prototypical model from the state. So we multiply the number of students by these fractions of FTE to get our staffing. And as you can see, in some instances, things like school nurses, social workers, and psychologists, we have very little in the way of funding from the state. There are some bills currently in legislature that would modify this to raise this ratio. We'll see. And if they do raise it, will it be enough? We'll see. Currently, the student-to-teacher ratios, yes?
May I interject?
Absolutely.
Because I think this...
Because I think this is an important point. When we start talking about our mental health counselors in each one of our schools, when one looks at the social worker and psychologist, the .042 plus a .017, you add that up and you times that by four of our schools, you get about .2 mental health counselors compared to our four right now. So the state is not providing the money for that. And I believe the bills out there, it's very unlikely that they're going to do it. And if they're going to do it, they're going to roll it out to other communities other than ours first. It's likely it can take seven to 10 years. At least that's what we've been told. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to tell the community that. And if I've misdated anything, please correct me.
There's a there. There are a lot of conflicting priorities in the legislature when it comes to school funding this year. They're very committed to implementing SEB. SEB has a, the School Employees Benefit Board has a astronomical price tag to it. And so they're thinking of modifying our levy authority to allow us to help support SEB. So there's a whole lot of conflicting things going on right now.
And what we've tried to do with this slide deck is show this is where we are right now. These are the facts. And we know that over time, we're going to have to add and adjust things as it does change every year.
No, and this is perfect. This is a great information slide deck. I just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight this one thing because it is a community concern right now. So thanks.
So when we when we enter this student enrollment into the prototypical model, it spits out a number of staffing positions. Each position is funded for a calculated average salary now. Before, it used to be related to what their years of service, times their education was. And that was called staff mix. And there's a big grid that you know, you pick someone and you find it and that's gone for better or worse. Currently, the model right now is that there's an average salary that's applied for all the positions. Along with that is a calculated benefit for payroll taxes, insurance. Whoa. It's not attached. Also, CTE, it's a separate bucket of money, but it's given to us essentially the same as regular portion. Local levies, those are locally voted short-term property taxes that we have to add a specific purpose for when we take them to the voters and they provide specific funding for specific things. According to the McCleary fix, local levy is now supposed to be used for enrichment activities. That's still loosely and vaguely defined. Previously, pre-Mcleary, it was a percentage of our previous year's expenditures. Mercer Island was collecting 37.67% of our previous year's expenditures. We had a, we were grandfathered in at a much higher rate when laws changed and we were collecting about 3,300 per student and about $1.26 per thousand of assessed value. Under the brave new world of McCleary, we have the option of the lesser of $2,500 per student or $1.50 per assessed value. So we were collecting at $2,500 per student. That's several million dollars a year less than we've been previously collecting. And there's, this is what we're facing now. Last year, our community voted in a four-year bond, not a bond, sorry, a four-year levy that was based on the McCleary understanding. There's currently some bills in the legislature that would amend the levy formulas again and potentially take us back to a percentage model, much lower than where we are at, but it's it's up in the air. There's also options of saying the greater of $2,500 or $1.50 or $3,500 or $1.50. So it's, we're excited to see what happens. So this is just kind of a timeline of how levies work according to a school year basis as well as the implementation of McCleary and the levies and how they've changed over time. Levies are split between calendar years. So we, for a school year, we will collect the second half of the 2018 tax year and the first half of the 2019 tax year within the 1819 school year. So when we are looking at the 1819 school year, we are collecting half of the 16.87 million that was our last levy and then half of the 11.129 million. Moving forward, it's going to be very consistent unless things change. Because things never change in Olympia. This is kind of a distribution of our revenues according to the general fund. The other funds are, since they're so specifically focused and tied to specific functions, we didn't really include them in the slide deck mainly because they're relating to buildings and buses and student activities. And it's not necessarily entirely germane to the larger picture of how we operate as a district. 52% of our revenues, and this is for the 1718 school year, 52% of our revenues was state general purpose. Another 10% comes from the state as special purpose. Local taxes represented 27%. Local non-tax support, that's our foundation, PTAs, fines, fees, whatnot. That's 9%. Everything else comes in as much less. Over the last couple of years, we have seen significant increases in state funding. That's part of the McCleary fix. It's intended to be essentially a swap for our local taxes. Now, one of the things that we have to, part of the reason why I included the timeline and gave the explanation of of the levies and how they overlap in years is when we're going from close to a $17 million levy to an $11 million levy, it doesn't show up when we're looking at school year to school year, that large dip, simply because it's splitting over years. So if we continue this chart out into the next couple of years, we'll start to see a decline more steeply than what we've seen, see here. How do we spend the money? Now, this is, this is the fun part of accounting, we're getting into how we distribute the money. Primarily, we focus on programs. Programs are how we deliver and support the education mission. So Program 01, the first program, is general education. That's where we deliver all of the teaching, general instruction, all of that. Program two, or Program 20, which is the next program on the list, is special education. Within programs, we have activities and that's how the labor is divided. You'll have your 21 is supervision, 27 is teaching, 97 is support. There's 13 is the business office. So there's, it's tagged to divisions of labor within the buildings. And then objects. Objects are what we spend the money on. So salaries or benefits or books. And there's five main categories and that's salaries, benefits, supplies, purchase services, travel and capital outlay. So when we look at the distribution of expenses, it'll make a little bit more sense as to what some of the charts are focused on. And that's also how we focus our priorities when we build the budget, which is the next topic is how do we build the budget? What do we focus our priorities on? And the guiding principle that we use when we build our budgets is the operational expectations. Operational expectation four deals with staff compensation. Operation expectation number six or OE six, we call them OEs. OE six is budget and financial planning and OE seven is financial administration. And these kind of give us the framework of what we focus on. OE six is my wheelhouse specifically and it's the budget and financial planning. And it gives, gives six points with several sub-points as to what our main priorities are. And the first priority above all is maintain staff, parent, community support by focusing resources on classroom instruction. The second is that we have a cost-effective, balanced, sustainable and a budget that meets bargain commitments to staff and meets all legal requirements. And that we maintain adequate reserves to meet the financial requirements of bond rating agencies. And that we meet the, these other priorities such as safe learning environments, essential level of support for district operations, it's transportation, custodial services, technology, information, IT, as well as that we meet basic instructional hours, preserve basic education programs, that we keep up with the market. Priority four E is reflected, also reflected in operational expectation for staff compensation, that we are essentially competitive in a marketplace. That we prioritize our resources to giving you, the board, the ability to make changes to program as you deem it necessary to meet the educational mission of the district. And that I, as a business officer, am able to disclose all of my assumptions as transparently as possible and that we present it in a fashion that's understandable and relatable and that we get it in on time, which is August 31st. We like things to be on time. So in terms of our priorities and spending, you can see that 74% of, well, more than that, 60% is regular instruction, so general education. 14% is special education. Vocational instruction represents 3%. The categorical programs combined represent probably about one and a half to 2%. So with the exception of community services and support services at 22%, 88% of our budget is focused on delivering instruction. A lot of, a good chunk of support services is material costs, software costs. You know, we charge, the district uses a software called Skyward and everybody knows Skyward because that's where you log in to get your grades. We charge Skyward to support services because we're supporting the mission of delivering the educational program. That's also where custodians sit, our bus drivers sit. That's where our contract with Chartwell's, the nutrition services company sits, is in support services. In terms of objects, what we spent the money on and within the realm of delivering the educational mission, 66, 73, 83% is on staff compensation and benefits. Additionally, purchase services represents 14%. Materials and supplies is about 3%. A lot of purchase services comes in with, that's an object that we spend, software. We, that's Chartwell's, that's special programs for special ed. We have a lot of contracts where we bring in specialists to help with certain, certain items within special education. Travel and capital outlay represent very minimal portions of the budget, but we spend most of our, oh, sorry, there's a question.
Oh, this is great. I really appreciate this. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the community to see this. This is great. One question. The problem is when you give us, give us numbers, we always have questions. So one of the questions is looking at expenditure programs, the regular instruction, the special ed and the support services. To me, this looks fantastic when I, I'm looking at the support services and I'm looking at kind of the business equivalent of kind of overhead. I kind of think of that. I mean, it's not a complete analogous there, but it's a pretty good ratio. I mean, oftentimes overhead is much larger than 21%. Just a curiosity question, I wonder, I'm just like wondering how we compare with other districts. I imagine other districts have sometimes size, which is an advantage to scale. But when you look at this, are you pretty pleased with the breakout?
For the most part, yes. I think there's a, I mean, I think there's always opportunity for improvement, for generating efficiencies and looking for new options that can help speed things up and cost us less money. One of the things that we're looking at, one that we're bringing up later is the P-card program that we brought last week and we're going to revisit tonight. The P-card program is actually, a lot of districts find that actually winds up saving them money in terms of time spent processing. Time spent processing invoices, time spent processing purchase orders and requisitions as well as lost time filling out employee reimbursements and processing those. So there's, there are certain things, while it seems kind of, we're giving out credit cards, woo, it winds up actually potentially saving us money in the long run.
Contracted services are always something that we look at to see how can we best still meet the needs of our students? Can we do it better ourselves in-house? Is it something that we are better off still to contract with? And they are frequently reevaluated as well. An example being the Chartwell's contract, it will be something that will be coming forward for review here this year. So those are things that we're always looking to, how do we, how do we take, how do we get the best bang for our buck but still have the best services for our students as well?
The other one I think that might also be interesting is, you know, as parents, we look at the different subjects in school, English, math, science. Is it, is there a breakdown about thinking about the budget that way? How much do we spend on English? How much do we spend on elementary schools? How much?
That's, that's, that's a, that's, that's a little far in the weeds for me even. No, I mean, there, I mean, there could be some benefits potentially to taking a look at it, but overall, it's more about, from my perspective, it's more about how are we, are we adequately supplying the buildings? And that's more of a building generated question when we sit down with the buildings and with like principal pockets and principals, Aaron and Mary Jo and with Director Rundle, just kind of sitting down and looking at staff and staff allocations and what are, what are the credit requirements in some of these courses that we need to get kids through in order to be able to get them to graduate? So some of that is, some of that is a very fundamental thing that we have to staff a certain amount. Other, the other part of it, the 27% or 17% part that's not staffing, the supply cost is, that's more of a building-based decision and a teacher and department-based decision is how much, like what are we going to be doing this year to support our curriculum? Are we going to be buying new books? In which case, we'll have discussions about, you know, are we adopting a new curriculum? So there's, there's a lot of different decisions and conversations that need to happen about tying funding to specific programs such as English or math or science. And it usually relates about curriculum adoption and materials to teach the curriculum.
So really, you'd have to get that at the building level then by talking to the principal and surfacing kind of the course catalog perhaps and counting up courses or credit hours offered in each subject.
Yeah, it would, it would, it would be a very building-specific conversation.
The instructional materials fluctuate so much and it's all based on adoption years. So right now, elementary with the new science, you know, that's been a two-year process and that when, when it's all said and done, will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 250,000 for a K5 complete adoption. But we hadn't done science as a large adoption over 20 years. So the, you know, there's big hits at certain times and then it levels out and it drops down. As we've gotten into more of online subscriptions, we're now starting to see continued costs over time because the textbook spike that we used to see and then it went away for a while, there's now a textbook cost that goes down, but there's a subscription cost that stays with it. That's where the tech levy is really critical for our overall funding picture because we can use some of the tech levy to help us fund those long-term pieces, which have become an integral part of what we're doing. But But to Ty's point, you know, being able to determine the exact cost per program in terms of content area is much harder than looking at ELL, let's say, or Title I, obviously, with those generators as they go through. So it does become complicated. It's certainly more expensive to educate a high schooler than an elementary student. Middle schools tend to break even, and I don't know if this has been the same in your districts, Superintendent Kloski, but at least here and in Colorado, and, and I'm sure it was California, high school students run about a hundred-and-ten percent, and middle schools are break even, and elementary is about ninety percent of what they generate. And that's just because of all the counseling staff you need, all of the extra support staff, the custodial staff and, and whatnot. And as we saw, the apportionment doesn't cover it all, but I don't know if that was the case for you.
High school is, nine-to-twelve program is always going to cost more per student. It used to be described as the cost of a textbook was so much more, but you have to consider the amount of courses that the students have to have, and that, and that we do want to offer for our high school as well. So inherent in that is just a higher cost for your high school students overall.
Yeah, and I think the, the other side, parents might be interested, I think, in seeing how school funding in the sciences, you know, has changed over time, how school funding in the arts has changed over time, has, has some value too, to see where, are we fair about it? Are we favoring one over the other, depending on need? I think that's kind of the way our students look at it too, probably, is more from programs as well as parents. It's probably a difficult place to get transparency to, I, I appreciate that, but maybe something to think about as new tech, some of these might be a percentage of stuff, or some percentage of courses in the course catalog that help people understand that.
So just like we looked at the, the distribution over time of revenues, it's important to look at the distribution over time of expenditures, and how we spend the money. As you can see, over the last couple of years, salaries and benefits have taken some pretty significant jumps. Part of that is the McCleary settlements, McCleary fixes that have come in in terms of distributing state money to the districts, additional revenues to help offset the costs of the new salary guidelines that have been placed. And we are spending significantly more on salaries and benefits in terms of, of past practice and growth. Also, one of the most important drivers, so there's, there's, in accounting, we have what are called drivers, the things that make budgets move. Main drivers are revenues, expenditures, and the main driver of revenue for us is student enrollment. So this is, this is just projections of student enrollment. The red and blue lines are the enrollment projections performed by Dr. Les Kendrick a couple of years ago, in terms of where he believes that our enrollment will be going. The green line is our actual enrollment, and the dotted purple is our projections. My projections of, based on current trends of where we're going. So we are seeing a slight decline in enrollment. It is very small, we are less this year in terms of enrollment than we were last year, but the projection is that we flatten out in the next couple of years out. So we're not gonna be seeing as many students coming in. And this is just a graph, oh, sorry.
Question, Ty? We, and I think this is, we've always, for the number of years, we've seen how we've been tracking with the mid-range, and I think this first year is the first time we've deviated from it, and I, I appreciate kind of the conservative approach. Is there a reason why Dr. Kendrick's low estimate isn't plotted here? We have his high range, we have his mid-range, do we know, did he do a low estimate?
He did a low estimate, but we've never, we've never relied on it, because his mid-range estimate was so close to what we've been using, that that's kind of, that was our standard of.
Now that we're kind of going?
Now that we're going, yeah, we can take a look at it.
Might be nice to kind of throw that curve in there, to see what the, where it's bounded by.
One thing to consider is that this is, the lower student enrollment is a region-wide phenomenon. It's not just our district. I mean, Issaquah over-projected their enrollment by five-hundred students, which is a significant amount for them. And there are other districts around that have over-enrolled, or over-projected as well. So I, and getting ready to do the facility master plan, I reached out to Dr. Kendrick, and he said, "I'm not ready to talk about doing another survey right now. I know a lot of districts have a lot of questions about the enrollment projections that I made, and how we're not matching. Give me some more time to work on it."
But it might be interesting to throw the low projection in the next, whatever.
Yeah.
I think it's also good to note right now that our projections for this year are pretty much spot-on, which is kind of unusual for the region. We dipped a little bit, but we're right to where Ty had projected our enrollment to be.
And this is just a graphical representation of, the blue bars represent past and current. This last blue bar is our current enrollment. The purple bars are also our projections. So there is a slight projected bump in twenty-one, twenty-two, but overall, we're gonna be fairly consistent with around the forty-three-hundred student range. One of the things that we are looking at as we are, as we've been looking at our budget and projecting our budget out, we are now required to do a four-year budget by the state. One of the things that we've been looking at is a deficit spend. And we've been projecting deficit spending for a while, and there have been some, a number of saving graces that have come in mid-year to help pull us out of the fire, so to speak. We've, two years ago, we had, we were facing the levy cliff, and the state renewed the levy for another two years, thankfully. We also had a pretty healthy over-enrollment, enrollment beyond what we projected. Last year, we had an exceptional over-enrollment. We were about eighty kids over what we projected, which is probably close to about seven-hundred-and-fifty, eight-hundred-thousand dollars more in terms of state funding. We also got some additional state funding for transportation and a few other things that came in mid-year that really kind of offset our deficit spending. So these red squares off to the side represent the proportionality of essentially of deficit spending, what we, what we have deficit spent and what we're projecting to deficit spend. In seventeen-eighteen, it was a very small spend-down, mainly because we had so many additional students, and we got some additional revenue throughout the year. For eighteen-nineteen, it will be a little bit more, we're projecting a more significant deficit spend. And some of the, there are, there's three main drivers for deficit spending that we're looking at, that we've identified. One of them is special education. Special education is an unfunded mandate. We are required by law to provide these services, these specific services for these specific students. We don't get as much funding as we need from the state. We don't get as much funding as we need from the federal government, and therefore, we use our local levy to supplement that cost. The blue, the blue portion of the bars represents the state funding, the orange represents federal funding, and the gray represents the portion of our local levy that we need to use, that our community provides to us to support the mission of special education. And it is getting more expensive. Special education is getting more expensive as specific services are being required, and new techniques and new models are, are coming out. So that's one of our concerns is, it's just getting harder to educate the students when it comes to special education. There are certain requirements that we have to maintain, funding levels for them. One of the other drivers is staffing. And then there's actually two drivers that connect together when it comes to staffing. The first one is staffing FTE, or full-time equivalent positions. So when we are looking at our total staffing, we need to back out the number of positions that we get from the state, which is the blue bars. The actual FTE, or the actual staffing, the total staff we have is the orange bars. We are significantly staffed beyond our allotment for certificated positions, and we are a little more than double our allotment for classified positions. We have a lot of people, and it's something that we may need to look at in the future years. Our projections of deficit spending are increasing, and so we may need to look at, do we have the right mix of, of staffing? The other, the other factor that we have to consider is compensation.
Can I pause for just a moment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or pause you for just a moment. Going back just one slide, the staffing FTE is also, we talked earlier about SEB.
Yes.
The School Employee Benefits Board, which is going to become active soon. We still don't know exactly what it is, but when we look at the classified staffing, it almost double what is apportioned by the state, and where we are for our certificated staffing, we will be required to fund benefits for the full amount for everyone in the district, while we will only receive supplemental money for the state for what is, comes in under that prototypical school funding model.
And it, it gets better than that. The state will be funding us on an FTE model, so they will fund us on whole positions. When it comes to classified staffing, we don't have whole positions. We have people that work fractions of an FTE. So if you're working, we have someone that monitors, like a student supervisor that's out in the playground for four hours a day, you know, helping with lunch and recesses and, you know, supervision. Four hours is a little bit over a half an FTE. So we have significantly more people in the classified staffing realm than what we are allotted to by the state. We will be paying SEB benefits on a headcount basis, not an FTE basis. So there is going to be, it looks large, but it's actually larger in terms of what we will be paying.
And one of the things to, to keep in mind is with our, our local groups, associations, foundations, and boosters, who fund some of, many of those positions through local donations, what they funded this year or next year is, is not gonna fund the same amount drastically.
We've had, over the last two years, we've had significant challenges in working with the PTAs to make sure that they are able to collect enough money to support the positions that they've wanted to support. It's, it's been a struggle just because of the rate of increase in wages as well as benefits, and looking to the future, it's gonna get even harder. With SEB, early estimates at costs, we're looking probably about another twelve thousand on top of what we already pay a year for one staff member, and that, it just, it adds up. I mean, that's, that takes a lot of work for a PTA to collect even enough money to raise for a few hours, let alone health benefits.
We've been working closely with the PTAs that are doing this and trying to work out a model that will be amenable for all, that has some sustainability to it. We've had several conversations, and we think we're coming to a solution of where everyone's gonna be in agreement, of calling it learning supports, and, and instead of attaching it to positions, attaching it to that learning support, and perhaps a goal of raising a certain amount of dollars versus a position, because the position then is always expanding.
So, yeah, I wanted to kind of point those and highlight that out to our community who's watching, because as we have those conversations throughout our community, through all the different organizations that support us through those local donations, and business donations, all that, that this is gonna be a major conversation point over the next several years. And I think the earlier we get our community talking about that and recognizing how this works, it's one of the whole reasons I began following this path to, coming here to the board, was trying to figure out how this all worked, and where this money was going, and, and how complicated it is to only be sitting here now to realize that what I understand is the tip of the iceberg of how complicated this gets.
And that's, and that's kind of why we've wanted to put this slide deck together for a while, is so that we can kind of help get the message out that, you know, there are ripple effects to every decision that's being made within the district, then that really affects more than just that one little thing that we're looking at.
Also, just real quick, back in the previous slide, certificated staffing, we also consider administration in that too, right? Is that included in this number?
That is included in the number. Actually, yes, that should be included in the number. I will say, however, we are about point zero-five FTE above the state allocation for administrators. So we are, when it comes to certificated administrators, that's principals, assistant principals, directors within learning services, we are very lean when it comes to that. And part of the, part of that comes from just the fact that we are a very small district. We don't have a lot of the efficiencies that larger districts have when it comes to being able to generate more FTE for administration, and more FTE to allow them to do different things. So while we may have a slightly larger proportion of overhead for support services or supervision, we are able to accomplish a lot with what we do have in terms of, of staffing. And mainly, it's because of, of our building sizes and just that we don't have efficiencies. We have to have a certain number of positions in order to make things work.
Yep, understood.
So operational expectation four is staff compensation, and the, the primary focus of OE four is that we will be competitive within the marketplace. I believe it's section three, comply with all provisions of Federal Labor Standards Act, and Board Policy fifty-four fifteen, marketplace with organizations of comparable size, type, and with available resources. I think there might be a typo within that. We'll look at that. The whole purpose is that we will be competitive within the marketplace. It's getting harder to find teachers, it's getting harder and harder to get teachers to come work in districts, and it's getting harder and harder to get specific skills for teachers. Special education is a very demanding and highly skilled and technical position within education, and it's hard to attract special educators. I believe Issaquah had positions open all year last year that they weren't able to fill. So while the marketplace is, is one function of, the other function is, is how do we, I mean, wages can be a function, but the other function would be, how do we attract people to our district and keep them there? So we've, we've, this is something we started, I think, I started work on doing salary comparisons, I wanna say, two, year and a half ago, two years ago. And we've just been kind of following along with negotiations, and as teacher contracts settle, just kind of keeping track of where the district is in terms of how do we place within the marketplace. And we, we selected a group of ten districts, most of which are within our immediate neighborhood, some of which were picked for size and comparison and demographics, like Bainbridge is another island, it's very close in demographics and size, it's a Mercer Island, Saquonmi Valley is also very comparable in terms of size, and probably shortly, demographics as well. As you can see, I've also picked certain years of experience within the, the, the charts, within comparisons in order to compare ourselves. We have a very competitive beginning salary, so this is for a brand-new teacher, what's called a bachelor's zero, BA zero. Bachelor, they have a bachelor's degree and zero years of experience, they're brand-new baby teachers. We pay them just over fifty-six thousand. And as they, as they get more experience and more education, they move through the tables and get higher wages, a next common position to look. A next common position to look at.
Is that 56,000 fully burdened? Does that include benefits, medical care?
No, that is, that's just, that's just salaries. If we were to fully burden, we'd have to add 25% for the statutories, which is the payroll taxes, and then probably an additional 10 to 15,000 on top of that for health insurance and retirement. So one of the next common groups that we take a look at is what's BA 45. So it's the bachelor's, they have a bachelor's degree plus 45 credits of additional continuing professional education. And again, we've moved throughout the experience years. We sit at, step one is about 50, just under 60,000. We're pretty tight within the group. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest. We're upper middle. As we get more experience within the group, we do wind up being one of the higher groups. I believe we're third. Within 10 years, we are at third. When we get to 16 years, I believe we're still, we're the third or fourth. Another comparative one.
We don't have too many teachers without master's degrees, do we?
We do. We have some. I mean, it's, we have what's, we have what's called a scattergram. So we have all the FTE of the teachers plotted on the salary schedule with all the different boxes according to years of service and education. And so when you look at it, we do have a lot that's very skewed heavily towards masters and, and higher than masters, more education than masters, but we do have quite a chunk that's in the middle and, and the very beginning with the bachelor's. So I want to say 66% or more of our staff have master's degrees.
And on that same note, also years of service.
Years of service.
Figure into it as well. We have a, a large number of experienced and part of that new funding model that came with MacLeary is that they no longer take staff mix or experience factor into account.
Yes, that is true. There, we no longer, so we're, before we used to get an additional boost for more experienced staff, we now just get the average and hope that somehow it evens out between the baby teachers and the more experienced teachers. Again, it's roughly close to 66% or more that have 16-plus years of experience. So we have a very large group of our staff that sits at the bottom of the schedule.
And not to point them out too harshly, we love our experienced teachers.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything.
We love them.
Yes, they're, they're lovely people. They're lovely people. And my dad was a teacher, so I, I understand. He was, he was, he was one of those people that camped at the bottom of the schedule for a long time. Poor twist of words. Top of the schedule. Yeah, yeah, he was at the top, yeah. I'm just saying the bottom because, yeah, on the paper, yeah. It's just how it works on the paper. Oh, gosh. As, as we work through the masters, as plus zero, we're still right in the middle of the pack in terms of salaries. We do gain ground with more experience. As we get more experienced staff, we do gain a little bit of ground. When it comes to the upper end, we don't have a, so one of the things that districts tend to compare themselves on is the absolute rock bottom, zero, BA zero, brand new, first day on the job teacher. And then the, you know, I'm retiring next week because I, I love my kids, but I need a break. The, the most experienced teachers who are very committed, like Vicki Whiteman Toon, who's got 40 years of experience. So they take a look at the, the two polar opposite ends of, of where these schedules sit. And so some, some districts have a separate column where they recognize PhDs and doctorates. We don't. We tend to lump our PhDs and doctorates in with our most experienced masters professionals. We don't have, I think we have three PhDs, two of them are in special education. So when it comes to the, the top end of the salary, again, we are third in terms of market position. We top out at 113,000 at year 25. Other just, other schedules top out at year 31. There's, so it's a, it's a, it's a wide variety. And with the changes in state salary funding and state salary guidelines, it's become a bit of a Wild West in terms of who gets to what, to when, and how many columns and credits are being recognized.
This is great. I think this is the first time where we've been presented this information. It's all public information and it's also in tune information because I think all those school districts like us renegotiated contracts this last fall. Normally everybody's a little bit different, different cycle, but given MacLeary, everybody's at the same, same starting point. Maybe speaking for other board members, it's very difficult to be on this board when, it may be not speaking for board members, during negotiations with Teachers Association. And because we follow best practices and just let our negotiation teams discuss and we pretty much stay silent during that period, it's, sometimes there's a lot of misinformation provided about salaries. And so towards this end, being able to provide this on a yearly basis is wonderful. A, because it, it provides truth and number two, we need to know this and the community knows, needs to know this because of OE four, we need to provide competitive salaries. So thank you for this. Two things would, since we're, we're not recognizing the PhD, I think it's MA 90, I think it'd probably be better to cut, to retitle that. The other thing would be each one of these has about 90 numbers on it and I'm a visual person, but I think most people see this as graphs would be much more telling. Not now, but if there's ever an opportunity to present this in a graphical format, then you can kind of see how the, the interplay with the years come with it. And it's much easier to, to look at it and understand the big picture than to see a table of 90. But this is huge steps, so this is really appreciated. Last thing would be, I think I've mentioned this before, Mercer Island had, used to have a huge competitive advantage for attracting the best teachers and we still do, but as the region has become more affluent all around and as our commute distances have increased, a lot of these, a lot of our teachers are driving by other districts to work here. And I, I really want to make sure we continue to be competitive and I think it would be advantageous for us to track, you know, these numbers have to deal with attracting, but I think there's another number that's worth considering and that's retention rate of how much, how many people we're losing every year. And just to keep track of that, because I think if we keep track of that, that's an important metric to, to keep an eye on.
We do.
Okay. To publicly present, so, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. And then this, sorry about the, the large numbers. This is the last large number. I, I can't promise that. This is the last large number in this slide deck, a large group of numbers. This is our paraprofessionals comparison. We are, with very specific exceptions, specifically Seattle and some other groups within Seattle and within other, within some of the districts. A paraprofessional is not a paraprofessional across districts. Sometimes they'll delineate specific responsibilities within paraprofessionals, so the salary range for that year of service in that community will be different based on what they're doing. We don't really delineate, we don't separate our paraprofessionals. However, when it comes to paraprofessionals, we are, with the exception of Seattle, heads and tails above just about everybody else in the region. So throughout the schedule. And there's, there's additional, there's additional work that we're doing in terms of, this is just for paraprofessionals. We have, we have nurses, we have bus drivers, we have custodians now. There's a whole other swath of individuals and positions that aren't covered in these charts yet that we're still trying to build in, as well as our non-represented groups and our, our administrators. And then just finally expect.
Actually, just back to this salary tables, how did you account for differences in the school, length of school year, hours in a day, possible benefits, possible professional development time versus not?
None of that's accounted for here. Full disclosure, it's salary schedule and that is often what is, is looked at. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't talk about all those factors as well. What are the, what are the supports for professional development, whether it's technology or other pieces? What are the supports for coaching, particularly for baby teachers as Stein called them? What are the health and welfare benefits, all of those pieces? What's the length of the school year? What's the other opportunities that are available? So certainly, yes, this is about salaries, but that isn't always what retains especially and even recruits. When districts find out that you're supporting them or when new teachers find out that you're going to support them in those very beginning years, that can be a huge factor in bringing them in. And then as they get that support, sustaining that helps them want to stay too. Plus, it's a great place to be.
And then lastly, we have policy 1800 or operational expectation number seven, which is financial administration. This is another set of guidelines specifically revolving around how we maintain the finances, what are some of the controls that we place. And later on into the OE, operational expectation number five, maintain adequate budget reserves to meet financial requirements in bond rating agencies. We find, I find myself at cross purposes at times when it comes to the OEs. We have priorities given to OE four, making sure that we're competitive within the marketplace. We have priorities given to making sure that we're meeting the instructional needs of the students. And to do that, we may need to give up operational, number five, this item of maintaining adequate budget reserve. So in order to maintain compliance with the other aspects of OE six and OE seven and OE four, we might fall out of compliance with aspects of OE seven, maintaining adequate reserves in order to look at moving forward. And that's, I'm just saying that to, to be transparent and I am the conservative naysayer in the district. I have to say, we can't afford this. And, and honestly, we can't. When we look at our, and this is, these are the last two slides. This is our four-year outlook. We are projected, if we continue on as we are now, we are projecting less than a million dollars in four years in terms of fund balance, which is not, which is not sustainable. We will probably not have sufficient cash reserves to meet monthly transactions. So there, there are some, there are some tough questions that we need to, to take a look at in the coming months and years in, in terms of, of how do we move forward?
So again, the intent of this slide deck was to provide the facts of how does our budget work? How does it interplay with the operational expectations? We thought that was important to put those in there. So it is the actual language directly from it, but we felt compelled to put that in there so that people can see. We have these expectations that we are, that we are following there. That's the guiding principles for the board and then of course for staff as well. So this is, you have the first look at this. Our intent is to have it up on the website so that the public can access and see and, you know, use it as a tool as we talk about the budget at a glance with different groups. It's, it's lengthy, but there, there's a lot of points that we have to make.
I think you also do raise a good point about when we talk about their compliance monitoring of the budget. You know, we found this in compliance the whole time. Are we moving to the point where we should start thinking about not being in compliance in terms of bond rating? You know, I, I think the four-year outlook says we're not. We have gone through, you know, half the year and it hasn't really changed any. So next time we do the monitoring, I mean, we should really be thinking about that piece not being in compliance. And then I think real action by the board will need to be taken to have a plan at least that we do bring that back into compliance. And I think the other thing is when do we need to go out for a bond will also be in question too as to how that should be in compliance. But I think the other piece about it was can we make, meet monthly obligations, our cash flow obligations as well, not just the bond piece? So something probably we will have to take up next time we do this monitoring. Thank you, actually. This is, this is a great report. This is actually a really good time to be doing it when we don't have stress of developing a budget, stress of bargaining and other things going on. It's in the middle of the school year. It's actually a wonderful time to be doing this type of report. So thank you very much for the hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I had a couple of things information wise for our directors and anyone watching. Dr. Kendricks' projections were presented to the board on April 20th of 2017. I think that was the most recent report we have. And on page 24, you'll find his lowest projection. And he had for October of 2018, roughly 4,440 students and for 19, 4,417 students. So his low projection was in the range of what we're seeing right now, now how that moves forward. But so April 20th, 2017, page 24 is where you'll find that information. And then I kind of wanted to comment with the, the salary schedules that, and when we're looking at the, the layout of neighboring districts, districts, that we have to look at it through multiple lenses. So there's the operational expectations of, of being viable within the marketplace and competitive, which has nothing to do with the state of the profession or salaries of what should be deserved or owed, and there's a big conversation happening about that nationally right now. And also keeping in mind that there are certain districts in our state who have embedded in their policy that they will be the highest paying district in the region. And I know that there's at least two of them. And I'm not sure if they're on that list of 10, I will call them out specifically. But we were discussing this at Legislative Assembly, that if I think one more district kicks in, in our region to say that they're going to be the most competitive, it's going to be an all arms work for salaries, which is kind of what we're seeing as well.
And that's, that's exactly what's happened this last, this last summer was the, the blinders came off, the reins were let go and it was a, it wasn't an arms race. And there were districts who very intentionally and very purposely fully waited until after the start of the school year to do a midpoint negotiation and midpoint essentially mark to market. So as, there might be more districts that go that way too. So we could get mid-year, you know, we could be fine at the beginning of the year and be competitive and then midway through the year, it's, now we're number seven. So there's, there's, it's a very dynamic time.
It is. And with teacher shortage and all of that, there's, there's a reason for districts to be highly competitive and attracting and retaining that staff. But I wanted to make sure. But I wanted to make sure that we were looking really through those different lenses, that when you set that number out there against these kind of comparable markets, it's where we are, it kind of is a factual, here's where we are snapshot. It's not talking about the profession and what is deserved, or, I mean, there are a lot of opinions and discussions happening around that right now. And then there's that just policy aspect as well, that we're never going to be the highest in the region more than a year because the other districts will intentionally jump us because that's their ultimate goal is to be the number one or the number two.
And in years past, it was easier to be more competitive because as our state and federal funds would come in, we'd get an additional percentage kick on our levy, and our levy would just keep growing year after year. Now we're essentially capped as to how much is available to us. So our funding level is not dynamic to meet the dynamic range of salaries that are in the marketplace.
I think it's also important to note as well that the salary schedule in no way, shape, or form represents some of the working conditions, particularly class size.
So even more aspects to take into consideration. It's not an easy, simple story to tell, as many people would want it to be a simple, easy story to tell. And then also, just looking at that four-year projection, and it does make me nervous, and I think many of us were nervous in the summer, looking at this four-year projection, we are not alone. This is a very common situation. In fact, where we're looking in four years, five years, is much better state than many districts in our region and across the state. And currently, in talks, regular talks with our Legislative Committee at the Wasdau State Level, this is coming up as we're looking at bills that are currently being proposed, specifically looking kind of the ASB bills being proposed, that there's several unfunded mandates just within that single piece of legislature. And we're at a point now where we have to push back as districts against these unfunded mandates because our four-year projections almost all look like this. So it's important to keep that in mind as new bills are churning and things that we would love to do, but as you have so often said, especially on Mercer Island, we can do just about anything we want, but we can't do everything, right? So we have to prioritize that. I've heard both of you say that many times. Then I had just one possible request, and it's very, very minor. On the salary pages where we break those out by years and all that, and it says salary, can we clarify in there that this does not include benefits?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Because I can see that slide going out and being confusing for folks, and so.
Yeah.
Tiny, thank you. And thank you for compiling this. This is, I mean, there's a lot to it, but the more folks in our community are able to see this and understand it, and the more we are able to talk to our constituents about that and describe it, I think everyone's going to get closer to that same page of really understanding how we fund education and really this precipice that we're standing on right now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
President of the agenda.
Any other questions, comments? No. Okay, so now, let's see, we will move into Section Four, Partial Governance and Process Monitoring. For A is Board Policy 1800 OE 11, Projects Updates.
Brandy has been so incredibly patient.
Thank you, Brandy.
And she's going to be actually doing both of the next presentations. The first is just a brief update on where we are with a couple of our capital projects.
Great, thank you. That was really educational, Ty. Thank you. I actually enjoyed that. So our update, really just two projects I wanted to talk about tonight, give you an update on where we're at with the secured entry for the high school. We are in for both Design Commission approval and building permits. Due to the weather, our final meeting was scheduled for last night and was delayed. Because of notice requirements, there has to be a 30-day notice, so we are not able to get back on the Design Commission agenda until the middle of March. And we expect that building permits will be ready at about the same time, and so we'll go out to bid shortly after that. We did one study session with the Design Commission, and they tweaked a little bit of the design. So I think if you remember the original drawings I brought you, it had that continuation of the CMU band along the base with the windows above. And they really encouraged us to go back to what we've done at the music addition and then at the additions at the end of each of the classroom wings where it's more of a glass box versus a continuation of the CMU. And you can see from these renderings that I think that works really well, so. Yes.
Thank you for doing this. Two questions. One is, these two projects, are these what we should expect for the summer? Is there anything else going on? Or is that, that's one question. And then the other thing about the Design Commission.
It's not something we volunteered for.
How does that work? I mean, I guess if I'm in an HOA, I have a Design Commission if I was going to redesign my house, but we have to participate in that. And even though we've got a professional architect that's doing this, they.
So if you look at the city's.
How does that work?
If you look at the city's zoning code for the P-zone projects, which if you remember, we rezoned all the property from residential with a conditional use permit to P-zone with outright setbacks and heights and that kind of stuff established. It states in there that we will, that projects that provide an addition on the exterior of the building or any exterior construction are subject to the Design Commission regulations. Those Design Commission regulations were changed by the city recently. And I think prior to the change, we probably could have gotten away with an administrative design review, which is what we did on the three additions. And I wasn't here for the music addition, but I'm guessing that that's how that was done as well. The new Design Commission rules state that any project with exterior construction will go before the Design Commission in a P-zone property. And that's not one Design Commission meeting, that's a required study session and a final meeting and a hearing and a posting. You know, I mean, that said, I will say that I feel like every project that we've taken before the Design Commission has turned out better because of their input. So, and this is the front door of the high school, right? We really want to get this right. So although it's process, I think it was good. Yeah.
There's no exception for notice for snow days?
No. I tried, believe me, I tried.
And then just a reminder, question one, are these the two projects that are going to be going this summer, or are there other items?
These are the two big projects that we have going this summer. We've been talking about a turf field, and we're still working on some cost estimating and details on that, but these are the primary ones. Yeah. Also, I think this is the first time you've seen kind of what we're thinking about for the materials on the interior of that vestibule. So we're exploring the opportunity to use that salvaged wood floor from North Mercer that we used at Northwood. We have a little bit of that left, and we're thinking about doing the vertical common wall between the vestibule and the office with that material, and then using a wood ceiling, different than the middle school. And then you can see on the lower right is a rendering of what the interior of that office space would look like, so taking all of the furniture out and doing casework around the exterior, similar to what we did at Island Park. So I think we all feel pretty good about where we're headed with it. The other project I wanted to talk a little bit about, and I didn't include any photos of this, is Merry Way Pool. So we have two. Do you have a question?
I'm just curious about how this affects high schoolers entering. Do they, are the main three doors still open for high schoolers to go freely? Or is it the vestibule has to filter them as well?
Do you want to take that one?
I can take that one. During instruction time, so when the instructional day has started, students will have to go through the vestibule, so if they come in late, they'll have to come through there. So during instruction, the start of the day, eight to, help me out, 3:15?
3:05.
3:05. Students will have to utilize the vestibule to both come and go.
Thank you.
Great. So Merry Way Pool, we have two closures planned for the pool this year. We have a spring break closure and then a summer closure planned. And we've been working with McKinstry on the ESCO grant. And, you know, it's interesting, Department of Commerce has really delayed many components of this. So where grant applications were initially going to be due at the end of the summer, that was pushed out and pushed out and pushed out, and it was actually due December 31st. And their published at that point date for notice of award for funding was March 1st, and that has already been pushed out to April 15th. So the other thing is they got a record number of submittals. And because I think they gave that extra time, there was lots of opportunity for people to apply. And McKinstry is one of several big ESCO contractors that is preparing all of these grants, so they had a pretty good sense of what was being submitted and what would keep us competitive. So they have asked, you know, they suggested that if we wanted a chance of getting a grant, we needed to get into this 24, 25-year payback period. And so that brought our grant application down to about 380,000. So we still feel really positive about that, but also feel like we don't want to embark on that work with McKinstry until we have more certainty about whether we've gotten grant funding and whether we want to reassess that. So that being said, kind of the next big component in that building is we need to replace the electrical switchgear and the electrical panels that are 48 years old and have been in a pool environment for all of those years. So we have contracted with Valley Electric, who will be in on that spring break period to replace switchgear and panels. And then the other piece that we would probably do outside of an ESCO contract is the roofing. And in the big windstorm that we had this year, we lost about 11 squares of roofing, and a square's 100 square feet. So it's quite a bit of shingles that we had on the parking lot. So we can do that without going out to bid. We can do it through a purchasing co-op like we did the high school roof. So we're exploring that with Garland and the possibility of doing that over the spring break as well, or at least the tear-off piece. And the other thing to note is that we are talking about doing that in the metal panel. We've had some conversation about the potential for that to become a solar installation at some point in the future. And to put solar panels on, we would need to have a metal roof on. We don't want to do that with an asphalt shingle roof. And given the steepness of the roof, it is really well-suited for metal, so that's what we're exploring. Great, any questions? No? Okay. You bet.
Okay, without any questions, we'll move on to 4B, Board Policy 1800 OE 11, Long Range Planning, Request for Qualifications.
Sorry, before you is a draft document that staff would send out to a variety of entities to receive back RFQs that would then come forward to the board after some screening for qualifications and whatnot. You can see there's a big red draft stamp on this. It's going to be much more refined and put on letterhead and all of those good things before it's sent out, but we wanted to, there was some discussion about what would this look like, so we wanted to kind of let you see, this is our thoughts on how this would go out. Brandy.
So, you know, typically, a district would run an ad in the Daily Journal of Commerce to solicit statements of qualifications from architectural firms to provide the long-range facilities master planning services. And we can put a lot in there, or we can keep that pretty brief and direct them to a website that gives them additional criteria for how to submit. And I think the more information those firms have access to, the better the proposals will be and enhance our ability to really assess their approach to how they would work with the district. So any thoughts or concerns of what you see in there, or things you think we should add?
Yeah, it actually looked really good. I was very happy with it. I liked the idea of getting copies of previous facilities plans they've done before. I especially like the fact that we called out separately, both preparing for gathering input, as well as in specific gathering input from staff and community. Wonder how students play into that.
Yeah.
But I think it all, it made a lot of sense. I liked the way this was written.
Good.
I'd echo that. It looks pretty comprehensive. What would the timeline be in terms of the posting and the amount of time to give people to apply? Just doesn't have to be exact, just kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd put it out in the Daily Journal. We'd need a couple of weeks to get all the documents assembled online and get our facilities page kind of cleaned up, so that's nice. But, you know, give it maybe a couple of weeks to get an ad out, and then probably give architectural firms four weeks to really study the information and put proposals together. A couple of weeks to screen those down to three, and then maybe a week or two's notice about an interview. So I think we could certainly get it done before school was out for the year and have selected, you know, we'd talked about potentially selecting a firm and then giving them the summer to kind of prepare and then really engaging in the fall.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm really looking forward to this process, starting this processing, seeing what firms can bring to us. I like David's suggestion in terms of the community input and adding students to that as well. See if we can find firms that are student-friendly.
And that is always part of that interview and negotiations process as well.
Okay. Thank you for all your work preparing this and putting your time and energy into it. I really appreciate it. It's an exciting process.
It is exciting.
We're going to get a big education here. Anything else? Thank you, Brandy.
Did we need to vote on this in any way, or?
This was just for discussion, as it's part of the process as to what was the next step. And so when we had talked about it last time, we said, give us direction to go out for the RFQ, and so we wanted to bring forward something for you to see what that would look like before we clean it up and send it out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Section Four, Part C, and this will have action potentially.
Yes.
Board Policy 6212.
So this is the second reading of this policy for the procurement cards, which Ty had mentioned earlier. And so you have an attachment for the policy. A draft resolution is also attached, and also a procedure which has a big draft on it as well because we know that we're going to need to tweak the procedure as we work through the actual process of implementing this. But we wanted you to kind of see what our thoughts were on the procedure that we're going to be working with.
Now, there were some questions last meeting about the program, NP cards in general. The procedures outlined do cover issuance of the cards, who can hold the card, what they're authorized for. It covers procedures for checking out a card, establishing limits for a card. Also establishes record-keeping requirements, what the cardholder would need in order to do the monthly. We will be requiring them to do a weekly reconciliation and then a monthly report back to the district office. So all transactions will be reconciled regularly. So, all transactions will be reconciled regularly. So, there will be weekly reviews, monthly reviews. There will be, there's sections, procedures for dispute resolutions, as well as safeguarding the cards. Our current consideration right now is that we will most likely issue two cards per building. We're not looking to expand to make the program large in any way, shape, or means, but to give flexibility in order to be agile in getting specific things. Also, initially, we will have very tight control over what types of things can be charged to the credit cards. Right now, what we're looking at is things that are, we are prohibiting, we can't pay salaries or wages with it, no alcoholic beverages, no cash advances, no personal services contracts or payments on personal services contracts, no using it to pay consulting fees. We will not allow it to be used for purchasing of gifts. We already have a very tight policy on gifts within the district and/or using it for making donations. And we will not allow it to be used for purchasing items to be shipped to non-district locations. So, you can't buy it and then have it shipped somewhere else. So, what we do intend to use it for initially is purchasing supplies for staff meetings, purchasing supplies for things like nutrition classes where they need to go buy food in the grocery store. And it's very hard to do a requisition and a purchase order for carrots and celery and things like that. And I don't think Costco takes purchase orders. They might, I don't know. So, there's, I've never tried. So, there's certain things like that. Additionally, we would like to start using the P cards and the cards for travel so that we get out of the travel reimbursement business, so that it's, instead of having to pay staff, you know, have the staff go through the rigmarole of collecting the receipts and calculating their miles and calculating their hotel rooms and all those things. We can have them fill out the estimated cost before, get it approved, give them the card, check out, say, "These are your limits per days. Make sure you understand what you can and cannot spend it on. Remember, there's no alcohol," you know, and then go back, keep your receipts, come back, and process them as part of your regular weekly review and reconciliation. There was also a question regarding a space to record the justification of purchases. There are two different options where this works with the BMO, the WASBO BMO program. Skyward itself has a credit card module, an add-on that we can use for credit cards that we can download transactions from the bank and upload it into Skyward, and then you can go in and you can code your transactions to what budget you want it to be in, and then there's a space for a description of the transaction. On the flip side, BMO has its own tool called, I think it's Spend Dynamics, that also has an approval process and coding and a space for a description. So, if we do move forward with the BMO program, it has a built-in option to record the justification of all the transactions, and that will be part of the procedures. You spend it, you describe it. And I have an interest in that as well. Or, we could wind up using Skyward, which we're probably going to wind up using both systems, just for security sake, peace of mind, essentially. But there are ways to describe the transactions and what will be purchased on the cards. As well, there was another question last week about US banks, US-based banks. There are some districts that are using US banks. I believe Issaquah is actually using US Bank. I believe Puyallup uses US Bank. Part of the benefit of being with WASBO, the WASBO program, is it's, there's 17 state associations that are part of the program. There's, I want to say 17,000 schools, school districts that are part of the program, and we get rebates, we get discounts, we get cash returns on it, as well as a lot of support from getting established programs. And there's volumes of procedure manuals that they have available for us to look at and essentially plagiarize when it comes to, there's no plagiarizing when it comes to policy. I shouldn't say that in an education setting. But there's a lot of built-in supports that come with the program.
Thank you for this. I appreciate your interest in the justification, just having a line there. I think it's, it causes people to kind of think about it. How is this applying to education? I think it also provides a nice historical record so that if you're buying celery, "Why was I buying celery?" Or something like that. So, appreciate that. And, let's see. I also appreciate you looking into the various banks. Your call, respect that. I just, given it was a foreign bank, I thought it was at least worth a phone call to see. But we'll definitely look forward and would respect whatever decision you make and the district makes. And these are just two comments that are more, I think, directed towards the procedures, which I think is more of the superintendent's jurisdiction. So, I'll just throw it out there, and then whatever you want to do is fine with me. There's a, under definitions, it has prohibitive transactions. And it's kind of tough to list all the potential prohibitive transactions, right? It's, you know, I see alcoholic beverages, we probably should put down marijuana as well. But I'm wondering if there should be, could there also be a catch-all phrase? You know, any transaction that is not aligned with the educational mission of the district in the classroom, something like that that is really kind of a test, because you're not going to capture everything. So, that's just one thought. And then, the other thought is, you know, I did mention this to people I respect in private industry, and I think people have run into issues when cards get distributed to everyone. And it was like, wow, okay. So, I appreciate that you're potentially limiting it to two or so many per school. It might, I'll just throw it out there, I wonder if it's worth considering putting that down somewhere here, what the intent is, so that when we're not all here and we're all different five years down the road, this doesn't go in a direction that wasn't intended. So, maybe some statement saying it's, really the idea is to limit it to X.
And there, I believe we did make an effort within that. We pulled out a segment of the procedure regarding applying for a P card. You know, there is a section of the procedure, this is, we pulled this from various examples, and one of the examples that was there was, you know, how to apply for a P card and what's the process for that. We don't want them applying for a P card. There's no application process. You will get a P card or you do not get a P card. And it is solely the superintendent and/or doesn't use discretion.
They will be allocated to specific positions that currently now have budget access at school sites or within the central office. And so, there will be a process of education for anyone who does have one assigned to them, that they will have to fill out some forms that someone from business is going to sit with them and walk them through and all of the requirements and training that goes along with it. So, if an employee in a specific position that is assigned a P card leaves, of course, that card then is secured because that position has that authority to have that. But they are certainly only designated to specific purchasing positions, which already do that within our system, but not necessarily with a card.
Do P cards have a name on them, or individual's name, or the school district named?
That's something that we're still working on. It gets tricky trying to check out a P card that's assigned to Vicki Puckett and take it to travel with. So, we're going to be working with BMO to make sure that we can get something that's assigned to Mercer Island School District, Mercer Island High School.
We have some that, and I have actual previous experience with this, where we had some that were kept secure in the business office that were the allocated travel cards, and they had to be specifically assigned and checked out and forms filled out before the employee was given that card to take with them. And I can also, I also know that when, in a previous district where we participated in this, when there were some red flags that went up on those travel cards, the business office was notified in minutes of the red flags, and we were able to, just as you are with your personal cards, it was controlled very quickly, because they also knew that these were specific cards assigned to the school district.
Yeah. I think it looks great. I think you brought us some interesting points. But no, I have confidence in this. Any other discussions, questions, comments? No. Okay. So, are we looking specifically at the draft resolution for action? Is there still work happening on the 6212P?
I think you're looking at both the resolution as well as the policy. They go part and parcel, can't have one without the other.
Okay. So, is that three or?
Just two. The most is the policy and the resolution.
So, I guess I move that we approve Board Policy 6212 for the procurement cards as well as procedure 6212P. Would that be the correct motion, that we would approve both of them?
There's no need for you to approve the procedure. That's administrative, so you approve the policy.
Okay. And the draft resolution?
Yes. After the policy. Correct.
Should we do them individually?
I would, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, I move that we approve Board Policy 6212 on procurement cards.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just briefly, I would appreciate it if the superintendent would consider my suggestions about the procedures when you do it, in terms of those two slight modifications. But that's the superintendent's purview, so that's just my simple request.
Seeing no other discussion, all in favor of approving Policy Number 6212, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it is 4-0 in favor of approving. So, now we'll do, I'll entertain a motion.
So, I'd like to move that the board approve Draft Resolution 673 on procurement card authorization.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Nope.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor of adopting or accepting Draft Resolution Number 673, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing no opposition, 4-0. It is approved, adopted. All right. Thank you, Ty. Okay. So, moving on to Section 5, Full Governance Process Monitoring Language Review. 5A is Board Policy 2020, Fundamental 3, Social and Emotional Skills. And we're looking at the superintendent's interpretation in this one.
So, this came attached to the last monitoring that included Fundamental 3, and it was monitored based on the previous interpretation. And so, in order to revise, we brought it forward so you could kind of take a look at it, and here is kind of the second look at it. And did give you on the agenda Board Policy 1605 that guides the practice of our fundamentals in Board Policy 2020 and operational expectations. So, after you've had some time to digest and review, are there any questions? We've made reference to some very specific documents, but did want to cite them, Castle being one of them, and their definition of social-emotional learning, and then also that Washington State has taken on this work as well, and there's some documentation on their work and how we are engaging in that same work.
Questions? Comments?
Could you give us some additional color around how you think this will change instruction in our classrooms?
I think it's more about the emphasis in two ways. One, in certainly, we are, we will continue with explicit instruction, as we have been doing, an example being Second Step, where it's really called out as this is social-emotional learning, and here's where it's carved out, and here's the specific units within the curriculum. And of course, providing training and professional development for teachers in that area. But it's the ongoing work that is above and beyond our teachers, but with all of our staff, as to social-emotional learning that's ongoing for all of our students, how to identify best working relationships with students, how to be able to identify any red flags that might pop up. So, it's really about that professional learning across the entire system for all adults working with kids. I think that's going to be the heavy lifting of the work that we're going to be engaged in.
I just want to mention appreciation for this new, what would you call it, terminology, verbiage, interpretation, as well as the use of citations, citing just people and organizations that have just done some super-duper heavy lifting. I think for an organization like ours to kind of create an interpretation on something that's extremely well-studied, I think this is really a best practice of looking at best practices, taking what they have done with science and evidence-based approaches and citing them as part of our fundamentals, and I really appreciate that. And I think it empowers people who are reading this to then look up these sources, and so that they can further their own kind of education on the topic. So, thank you.
I will say that when we were working on this, we did not have access to the most recent Aspen Institute document, because that was released after this was already done. But there definitely are some great references in there, and I know that that's a work that we referenced in some of our other work for people to take a look at as well.
Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the revised superintendent interpretation of Fundamental 3.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor of approving the revised superintendent interpretation of Fundamental 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, it is approved, 4-0. Thank you. Okay. Which brings us to 5B, Academic Entrepreneurship, which is Fundamental 4.
So, this was also monitored at your last meeting. Fundamental 4 is the interpretation stands as is. We will look at it next year. So, this is really just an opportunity for you to monitor that language, to determine if it still meets the need.
Going once? Going twice? No? All right. So, no adjustments to the language at this? So, no adjustments to the language at this time? Okay. So that brings us into the consent agenda, Section 6.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So the agenda is, or consent agenda is approved, four zero. So we move to Section 7, Superintendent's Report.
Couple of things to update you on. Many of you might be aware that vaccinations has been a hot topic, especially in Olympia, and especially in light of a really devastating outbreak in our state. Fred just handed me today, and so I did want to share them with you. Our vaccination rates for measles at our schools is above 95% at every single one of our schools, nine, greater than 96 at West Mercer, 96.1 at Island Park, 97.45 at Northwood, 98.8 at Lakewood, 98.5 at IMS, and 98.5 at Mercer Island High School. So, that puts us in a really great protection area, but just wanted you to be aware of where we stand locally on, on that. Secondly, we are halfway through February, Happy Valentine's Day, and so we do actually have a candidate board workshop scheduled, and so I know we've talked a little bit about what would be some of the materials, so we've done, we had a previous slide deck that we've, staff has just updated to make it more current, that I will share with the president and vice president as we're agenda planning, and look at perhaps some other documents to compile a set of tools for you to use as well as with the candidates, and as well as candidates to utilize for, for questions. So those will be forthcoming over the next week, which does include our midwinter break, so happy midwinter break after tomorrow, which is going to be a regular day, I am convinced, with a normal start, with regular bus routes. And on a more serious note, just to acknowledge that today is the one year after Parkland, and just a reminder of that tragic, tragic time, which did have come out of it some real pride in student action and student voice, and a really important movement of, represented by hashtags, which is certainly representative of our students, two in particular, hashtag never again, and hashtag march for our lives, so just as a remembrance for all of those lost in tragedy. And that's all I have.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to Section 8, Board Announcements, Inquiries, and Reports. 8A is the Legislative Representative Report.
The Day on the Hill was canceled.
Director Jorgensen and I had had a conversation about this with me serving on the Legislative Committee at the state level, and Director Jorgensen as our legislative representative, that perhaps if the board approves, that this could be a bit of a conversation between the two of us as well.
Yes, and it's recognizing, I think our board president has a lot of passion for legislative advocacy, and I've stepped in, because you've stepped in as president, but I also wanted to recognize that you have a lot of interests as well, and you should be able to opine away as well during this legislative report. How's that?
I appreciate it, and I don't want to step on your toes, I'm happy to share information. I do want to point out to everyone, and I may have done this before, maybe not, but I recently had a constituent reach out to me concerning a bill that's currently being discussed, it has to do with the new levy amounts. And, so I directed them to the WASDA website, and so if you go to the WASDA website, W S S D A dot org, and you go, I think it's under Legislative Agenda, and you do that dropdown, you can come into a website that, or an area that is accessible by any legislative representative or anyone who's interested, a citizen, in learning more, because WASDA is a government agency, its documents are all public, and so you can sign in, put in your email address, and you can sign in for the Friday legislative updates that will happen every Friday through legislative season, session, I believe it's 12 o'clock to 1:30, it's right in that timeframe around lunch. If you can't do the go-to meeting live, and they'll give you the updates and the links to do it live, if you can't do it, everything is archived, you just won't be able to ask questions, whereas the go-live meeting, you can actually ask questions. And the director who oversees all of our legislative staff for WASDA is the one guiding that message every Friday while the legislature's in session. So I encourage everyone to submit your email addresses, get the archives, or just tap into the archive video and see what's being discussed, because it lays out what's happening in the coming week, what's just been through, and kind of the different groups within WASDA, from Legislative Committee to the Resolutions Committee, to all of that, who are putting an input on this. And I don't often have the time really to reach out with some of the calls for input that I get on the Legislative Committee, and I'm still finding my bearings there, it's a pretty fast-moving group, which is surprising. But some of the big things they're looking at right now at the state level, and these bills will be coming up in committees soon, one has to do with the levies, and the changes in levies, and proposing what that might look like, including the 20% based on the former model, without grandfathering, or $3,500 per student, which is interesting. We're looking at the simple, simple majority on capital projects, that language is coming up. OSPI, the State Superintendent, has proposed new language changes to our sexual health education. There's a bill coming out around that. A lot of that is around identifying gender, gender expression, and codifying that into the program, which obviously has a lot of people kind of stewing around local control over that curriculum and what it should look like, so that's going to be a particularly interesting debate, especially as we watch input coming from across the state on that. Trying to think, one other, oh, the Associated Student Body. This is one of the ones that had a lot of unfunded mandates that are being plucked out of it, and it's, it's basically saying how much they should have to reserve out in order to create stipends or scholarships, so, to make sure that everybody can get involved, and I think the intention is fantastic, it's around equity, but also, what is the administrative cost going to be to districts, especially when we're looking at these four-year projections? And ASB money belongs to the ASB, and is it appropriate for the state legislature to be dictating to the Associated Student Bodies at a local level how they should be using their money? So, if, I would say, right now, two bills that are going to be really interesting are going to be hashed out. One has to do with the ASB funds, and the other will have to do with that sexual education, sexual health education modification, which is coming out of OSPI. So it's interesting watching it go that way. But, that's kind of what's happening there. Unfortunately, we don't know if the Day on the Hill will be rescheduled, if we're able to do that. Again, I offered to set up any appointment times for all of you, reach out, and if we set a date, I'm happy to escort all of you up to the Hill and knock on some doors.
Well, and I would say if, if our student board members are interested, then I think it'd be nice to be able to give them that opportunity, so I'll let Donna approach Brian if, if they're interested.
We kind of discussed that, and what an extraordinary opportunity to head to the Capitol with business to accomplish, and to meet with state-level lawmakers and policymakers, and to understand the power of your individual voice. I think the soft skills that are enhanced through that, the experience of going through it and having that confidence in doing it again, and really flexing, using your voice to make changes in policy. So, even beyond these representatives, any student delegation that would like to head to the Capitol, I'll be happy to set up appointments. Okay. Anything else? Okay. So, we'll move on to the YFS, actually, it's the Youth Family Services Foundation stakeholder, well, it's not even that, stakeholder meeting, report, discussion, the coalition. There was a meeting yesterday that I wasn't able to attend. It was today, yes. It's still Valentine's Day. It's been a big day. I was not able to attend because I was room parenting for a Valentine party for some very excited fourth graders. So, David, were you able to attend at my place? Okay, so I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you.
I'll go, and you can correct me, or add to it, or delete anything I say. I think there were probably about seven of us, it was pretty small attendance compared to previous groups. Group A had previously submitted their homework, which was the pros and cons about a potential standalone levy in support of the six youth mental health counselors in each one of our schools, as well as a geriatric counselor, and so that one has been packaged pretty well, and there was another member of the group that today presented their proposal, which had to do with kind of that concept, as well as enhancements to both mental health counselors, as well as potential additional SROs. This person was kind of, what would you call it? Exclusively working with one of the city's MIYFS member's staff, and I think some of the input that we provided was, if you're looking at kind of a best practice model, that perhaps that information should come from more of the people who are responsible for this, including our superintendent, the chief of police, if we're talking about SROs, as well as the director of MIYFS, and to the extent that they could find out if there was mutual buy-in to that enhanced approach, that would be good, as opposed to just having kind of a unilateral opinion on enhanced services. So that was some feedback. I, I think it was extremely well-intentioned in terms of, hey, if we're going to look at that, let's look at whatever the best practice could be. But there was the thought that, you know, if, if the city is making existing cuts already, it might be an overreach to not only ask for those existing programs to be preserved, but also expand it. But, in, in vetting things, nothing should be cut short, and so that, that one's going to be considered. I think there was also interest in looking at the senior programs, and if we're looking at enhancements, look at the enhancements to the senior, senior programs. And then there, I think there's two other groups that have to do with looking at alternative sources of money for that type of funding, and I believe last week we were, were sent a letter that was sent on behalf of our superintendent and director of MIYFS to King County Best Starts for Kids, and I think Assistant Superintendent Fred Rundle also helped with that, and it was a marvelous letter.
Fred is instrumental.
Yeah, we're working on a meeting with the director of Best Starts for Kids. In fact, Cindy Goodwin and I exchanged emails and voicemails today, we have a meeting for tomorrow, and we're hopefully going to be meeting with Best Starts for Kids right after the midwinter break, and then we'll take the full proposal forward on behalf of both organizations.
So that's, that's awesome. I mean, just knowing that we're trying everything as a community to find out those, those sources of funds. It was a wonderful letter. I don't, I don't know if it was meant to be recurring or one-time that ask, but if it's going to be a recurring tax, and if they hopefully renew that levy, I, I hope the ask will be to that it would be kind of a recurring amount, so, just planting that seed. So, and I think they're going to do a doodle poll to all the attendees to see about meeting sometime in about two weeks, and it's an interesting process, and I'll leave it to Director De Souza to add, or to that.
Yeah, I think there was some additional talk about thinking through surveys around what the community interests are around this. I think Youth and Family Services does a number of surveys today from Healthy Youth that we also look at, to many other ones, and I think the group decided that's probably not the place to be surveying funding issues and other things like that, kind of confuses purposes, and so there's still an open issue around how could we do a community survey around understanding better why Proposition 1 failed? I think there was some, that was one of the other groups that was going to be working. Let's see, and I think there was also some discussion around short-term funding for these counselors that needs to be worked through, to the degree, I think that comes out of donations, either at the school foundation or MIYFS foundation. I think some of that might be stronger if there is a long-term solution around this, I think they kind of go a little hand in hand. It's, it's sometimes hard to get donations out when something that used to be paid for by a tax and borne by the entire community, now that gets borne by a few. And, you know, as we also saw, there were a great deal of other interesting creative ideas and requests for extensions of things Youth and Family Services could do, which in many cases is also what donors contribute to. So we might be thinking about, what are we donating to, and what are we funding by the community, kind of in a backwards way a little bit, but we should, we should, you know, in terms of vetting all ideas, that's another thing to think about, too. So it was, it was a good meeting, and hopefully we can continue this and speed it up a little bit.
Something I thought was interesting of previous meetings, was that there are, Jody Chris is kind of the ad hoc leader at the group, even though she says, I don't want to be the leader of this group, certainly not alone, but when she set up these work groups, they're really trying to look at a broad spectrum of options, including backing out of the King County library system, even though I don't think many people in the room think that's necessarily a viable option, but they want to get a work group together to at least explore it and understand why it's either viable or not viable, and what those ramifications would be. So, I appreciate that the group is really trying to look at a broad spectrum of options in this. I did want to point out, this last meeting, we're still getting our personal emails kind of confused with our district emails on this, so I keep reminding them and circling back and making sure that we're CCing our public district emails on that. This last meeting, today's meeting, was actually organized by you, Director Jorgensen, and you're part of that work group A, which is looking at that six-year standalone levy, because that's really our official stance as a board, but I wanted to talk to that briefly about that, to make sure it's transparent as to how that kind of came to be, and...
Well, I do include my school district email address, and sometimes I'm using a different computer, but I'll always CC my district address, and I didn't, I don't know if I necessarily organized it, I volunteered to do the doodle poll to determine what date we were going to meet, yeah.
I just want to make sure transparently that we've got how that kind of came through and organized. Thank you. And then to point out that the, because of the snowstorms, the Youth and Family Services Foundation Giving from the Heart Breakfast was postponed, and the new date is March 6th, it's a Wednesday from 7:30 to 8:30, and you can attend, it's a really amazing breakfast. If you can't attend, you can go to the foundation website and donate for... If you can't attend, you can go to the Foundation website and donate from there as well. That is a viable option that is currently available to all of us to participate in. Okay. Any other questions or comments about the Coalition? All right. And we will move on to 8C, Announcements, Inquiries and Reports.
Let's see. I think the most interesting one was the January 31st Board-to-Board Safety Event at the Puget Sound Educational District. Brian, Deborah, and Donna, as well as myself, had attended that breakfast. It was, sorry, dinner. I'm, yeah. And it was well-attended by a variety of different districts. We were sitting with the Bellevue contingent, and I was interesting getting his perspective as well. But there were many other districts, Isakwar, bigger districts, smaller districts, all present. What my takeaway, there was a good discussion around kind of three ways of thinking about protecting our schools. One is arming schools via SRO, Safety Officials, and arming teachers. A second was fortifying schools with kind of stronger structures around them. And then the third was social and emotional mental health instruction and support for kids. And really, it was very interesting to see the group educators, pretty much everybody go into Number Three and think really about social-emotional learning, which was our focus earlier. I think there was clear consensus that that was the most important space to be, for schools to be participating in. It helps both with violence, self and to others, and actually self being predominant, and many other issues in schools, too. So it was interesting that such a large community of people lighting up around that. It's also interesting that there was acknowledgement that, you know, Number One and Number Two have some interest amongst people, and they feel like you can make perhaps more progress around that faster, but in terms of effectiveness, social-emotional learning is the clear winner. So very, very interesting takeaways from that dinner. But other than that, I think, glad that school is back in session, glad that everyone survived the snowstorm, and trees and branches and all those other things falling caused getting stuck. But glad school is back and open again for at least a couple days till break.
Not much of a report. I did want to throw out an open question, and I think I've seen where, you know, the city is having their fiscal challenges, and certain programs are at risk, and I'm not sure at what level they support this one program. But specifically, I'm mentioning the All Island Track Meet, which has been a wonderful tradition, I think, with our school district for probably 50 years at least. And I don't know to what extent the city has supported that event, but I think it would be interesting for us to make sure that, to see if there's a way to make sure that that can continue. It's kind of an open-ended question, we don't need to talk about that now. But there's certainly a lot of parent volunteers, et cetera. I might be self-interested in maybe not having the event, because maybe my Mercer Crest standing long jump record might not be threatened. I'm actually making that up. So I'll end the report right then. Thanks.
I wondered the same thing, actually, in terms of that, because my understanding was, I mean, Boys and Girls Club does the T-shirts and puts on the event, so I was a little confused when I saw that on the list of things to be cut. It's a wonderful tradition for our fourth and fifth graders, right? Fourth and fifth? And really, it's something that I hope that we can make happen, even like getting our high school students to help with running, if there's something that they can do. But no, thank you for bringing that up. I had thought about that when I saw it on the list. Not much to add. I just, I don't want to repeat anything. I just want to wish luck to all of our student athletes this weekend. There are many state competitions. I know at least basketball and swim team.
Wrestling.
And wrestling. I know they've had a rough couple weeks with practices, and hopefully they got a lot of rest, which matters, too. So anyways, good luck to you all, and we'll be cheering for you, even if we can't be there in person.
Let's see, I've already covered some of my stuff. Legislative Conference was canceled. I almost got stuck in Olympia much earlier. I was accepted into the Leadership WASDA Program. About 20 of us from across the state were accepted to the program, and we'll travel around the state to six different times and receive professional development around engaging with our communities and boards and policy and all of that. So I was supposed to be in Olympia on Friday to start that for Friday and Saturday, and then early Sunday would have been with the Equity and Access Caucus and the Large School Caucus and the Legislative Committee rolling into the conference. And I'm really glad that I dragged my feet on leaving the house on Friday, because everything was closed, including the Legislature on Monday, which is rare. But I could have kept Representative Neelam Thai company. She was, got there early and got trapped and lost power. I fell for it. Let's see. I had my first meeting with the city leadership. Superintendent and I met with the mayor and the city manager. We talked kind of generally around budget issues, shared kind of with them our four-year projections of what we're looking at as they discuss their current budget woes, and tried to stress the importance of these inter-local agreements and how this is kind of fragile as we look at those things right now. And they seemed cooperative in trying to move forward. And of course, we're building towards our Lincoln Session coming up in the spring. So we'll continue to do this once a month, but we've now had our first meeting. I've already talked about the several bills heading into committees coming up. Special education is in there as well, funding for that. Tagging on to your discussion about the school safety conversation that we had, the Board-to-Board, I thought it was really fantastic that Puget Sound Educational Services District to host that, to have those many people from our region, to have a really broad conversation and to see what are those norms within our regions and expectations, I think was nice. And they really did some nice table work, I thought, with us, where we were asked some specific questions, and we had to kind of think out loud in very specific, short-time windows to throw a lot of questions and asks onto paper. So it's going to be interesting to see how they digest all of that and how they return to us with that information. And I thought it was incredibly powerful and useful, and so I look forward to hosting more events like that. One of the interesting things that came up that I had never thought about was when they were talked about arming staff members. The gentleman who spoke to that just mentioned the fact that you can't get an accidental death insurance policy to cover an incident that might happen in your schools. And there's no back fund or anything that would provide for that. Easily a $5 to $10 million settlement on up to $50 million would be devastating to a school district, so.
Actually, there is one district that is paying an insurance policy for their...
They were able to get one?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's a whole new world, right? Yeah. So I think that's pretty much it for me. It was exciting to get back into the school, and the kids were all really happy to be in school today. They were so well-behaved and awesome, yeah.
I did neglect to call out our crew that has worked so hard while the rest of us got to stay home and be warm, and really specifically, our Director of Maintenance and Operations, Tony Kuhn. He is, I'm sure, asleep right now, because he's the first one out in the morning, but it was great to get to go and see the crew yesterday together. They all were having pizza together, and we're feeling good about a really long haul for them in working through this. And our city really helped us out this morning as well, because they have coordinated with Tony every single day as they've tried to get their streets cleared and help us see where our bus routes are going. And this morning, when he showed up in our parking lots where ice rinks, they brought a sand truck over and helped to get sand down, particularly in the high school, which is the biggest lot. So a big, huge thank you to those crews for working together.
I might tag on to that as well, to our residents who are not accustomed to shoveling sidewalks and stuff outside our homes. We do have many students who walk to school, to and from school, and so it's difficult for them to traverse that with sidewalks that are still icy and covered with snow. So please consider that. Consider us shoveling your sidewalks so our students can safely get to school and home. Any other comments, suggestions, inquiries? No? All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Four to zero, we adjourn.
Brian, I drove by, and I think I saw your daughter trying to shovel the sidewalk, and that was your sidewalk was the only one that had some sort of evidence of being cleared. So, good on her.
She worked so hard and did a great job. She volunteered for it. And then the snowplows came along.
Right, I was going to say.
Covered up again. She made a second pass, and then it got completely covered up again. So, yeah, we're, our sidewalks are not that clear right now, I think with the rain and...
Not because of the lack of effort, though.
And nobody but 72nd and the middle school sidewalk, right there, 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 school sidewalk.